Always for providing this public access. To make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature. That is how I know that you want to comment and can recognize you. To raise your virtual hand, you click on the participants in the horizontal menu bar at the bottom of your Zoom screen. When you do that, a column will open up with the participants of the meeting. The raised hand feature is at the bottom of that column. If you are calling in by phone, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine. If you're having trouble raising your hand, you may use the chat feature to send a message to me. I'll do my best to monitor that for people having technical difficulties, but that is the only purpose for which we will use that function, and it will only be used during public comment. I will unmute each raised hand in order. You may comment with or without video. When you begin, please state your name, and you must state your city or town for the public record. We do not respond during public comment as it is your time to speak. So while your comments should be directed to us, you'll understand when we don't respond to you. To ensure everyone has equal opportunity, each person has up to three minutes of time. I will begin the timer when you start speaking. If the timer goes off, I will ask you to please finish the sentence you're speaking, not the paragraph, not the page, just the very sentence that you're speaking. You can always email us your comments at citycouncil@northhamptonma.gov. And if you want to say something that's already been said, please indicate that briefly. You don't have to use your full time. So with that being said, we will begin public comment. And the first hand, I see you, Letitia. The first hand that I see is Lori Loizel. So Lori, you should be able to unmute yourself. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi.
Hi.
My name is Lori Loizel. I live on Grant Avenue in North Hampton, Ward 3. Dear City Councilors, dismantling white supremacy is the hardest thing we'll ever do as a country, but we can't stop until we do. White supremacy, the false, sometimes blatant and hateful, sometimes unconscious, subtle and insidious belief that white people are the standard, the norm, the most valued in society, has shaped all of our systems, from housing and healthcare to social work and policing. The framers of the Constitution had the right idea about equality, but their actions and their words contradicted each other, and that gaslighting is the reckoning we face today. That's why I think this move to abolish or defund the police misses the mark in the narrowness of its focus and the self-righteousness of some proponents. Say we close the North Hampton Police Department tomorrow, big deal. North Hampton would still be overwhelmingly white, a white community, highly segregated, based on race and class, its schools and businesses, houses.
Lori, we lost you. We lost your audio. Oh, wait, hold on. Hold on, unmute.
All right.
It's okay.
Now?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, sorry about that.
Businesses, I think, is where you were.
Okay, thank you. Its schools and businesses, houses of worship and healthcare centers, financial institutions, subsidized housing, and its one institution of higher learning would still be shaped by a society that overvalues whiteness and devalues people of color. Still, people of color would have less access to power in the rooms where it happens than white people. We must neutralize this power imbalance, which is a dynamic that becomes deadly when confined with police who may carry conscious or unconscious bias. But every one of us is caught up in it because we live in a white supremacist culture. It's in the air we breathe. This is hard, hard work, and to focus on the police and police culture only is myopic. It is also white people. It also white people lets us off the hook too easily. It's like cutting off your arm when the infection has already spread to your whole body. I wholeheartedly endorse the plan to rethink how policing happens in this community, as does my Ward 3 City Councilor Jim Nash, by the way. His vote against the 11th hour cut of the police budget by 10% was not because he supports the status quo. He too supports looking at and drastically changing the way police go about their work and what their responsibilities are, to figure out who is best suited to handle some of the duties we as a community have dumped in their lap. We are on the brink of change in our country and our cities, but we can't stop with policing culture and systems. On the streets in front of the White House and today in New York City, forward-thinking leaders painted huge Black Lives Matter murals for all to see. It's more than symbolic. I think we should do it. I think we should do this on North Hampton's Main Street. City Council, Mayor Narcoitz, can you make this happen? It will serve as a daily reminder to all of us to do something, big or small, to chip away at the white supremacy that made it entirely necessary for the creation of a slogan that should have been but never was obvious to all: Black Lives Matter.
Thank you. Next, we have Jose A.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Hello, everyone. Good health to you. I sent everyone an email earlier. I was born into a drug cartel. You imprisoned all my family members. They were pieces of shit. They were, they were bad people, so I'm glad that they learned kind of a lesson. Some of them didn't learn anything, and they're still being violent and being protected by the US justice system, which does more harm than it does good. The US justice system protects drug dealers and my family and prevents me from bringing true justice to my family and true protection to my family. They protected domestic abusers in my family that sell narcotics for great profit. My family has been bribing the police since before I was born. They've been smuggling for hundreds of years, okay, with the cooperation of the US government and the police that you've installed on the island, okay? They had to start smuggling because they didn't have any water, because you were controlling all the water systems. I'm from a rainforest. It produces the most water in the world, even though it's the smallest rainforest in the world. People there had to go to lengths to acquire weapons, planes, guns, fighting skills, and goods to sell so they could buy food and water, because you are invaders. You are colonizers. The police are the international death squad of the United States that protect water for white people, and they take it from indigenous people, my people. You took water from my people and you jailed my parents, okay? I was only spared because I was a child. You should be ashamed of yourself. Anyone with police associations should resign from this process. Not to say that you don't have a place in the conversation, but moving forward, anyone with close ties to the police, the United States government, should remove themselves from this conversation so that people that are well-educated in the local schools and people that are affected, like me, can have a calm, peaceful, reasonable conversation where we don't, where we are informed. We know what's going on. It's risky for me to even share these stories with you because my family might put a bullet in my head, okay, if I rat them out, because that's how it works. Snitches get stitches, right? You all know about that. That is common knowledge. I haven't spoken about this for my entire life because I have been living in fear of the government and of the drug dealers, because they'll kill me. And I'm a father, so I would like to very much be alive. Every moment that you delay this process, innocent lives are being lost. I will record this in history. I'm a teacher. I've tried, I've been all over the world. I've been to Europe, Australia, Africa. I will go to South America and Canada. I will teach everywhere: music, history. I will teach love, and I will teach healing. You will all be remembered in the light that you behave in. Behave well, so I can teach well about you, okay?
Thank you. Next is, let me, hold on one second. Letitia? Letitia, would you like to comment?
Yeah, yes, I would.
Okay, Letitia, I have three minutes for you, okay?
Thank you. I'll make it really fast, though. My, I have an idea about maybe they could do some like, some training for the police work, that's what's been going on, like back in the day from Black Lives Matter. Maybe they could do like a training, or maybe they could like help, help support, like maybe we'd get them to maybe help us all together, because I know, please, because nobody's perfect. Maybe they, nobody's perfect, and I think people still have a right to support their, like we go support them, like, 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 that's why maybe like help, help to, to, to support them.
Thank you, Letitia. Is there anything else you want to say?
I, I miss you, my friend. I would like to spend some time with you. Next, oh, I, I miss you, though.
Letitia, could you do one more thing for me? Could you tell, give me, could you say your full name and the town that you live in, please?
Letitia, what I, I live in North Hampton, and I'm Section 4.
Thank you. Good to see you, Letitia. I'll see you soon. All right, I'm hearing some background noise. I'm just going to mute some folks. Okay, next we have Karen Sullivan. Karen. Karen Sullivan?
Hi, yes, someone, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, yes, my name is Karen Sullivan from Ward 1. I wish to speak to the fact that this Citizens Review Board being proposed should not include any mandates around defunding or specific policies until a thorough review is conducted. The lack of due diligence and basic research on the part of this city council in regards to this matter has been, quite frankly, appalling. At the previous meeting, someone falsely stated that the department hadn't updated their use of force data since 2016. I went on their website myself and found the 2019 data as well as the call log in minutes. Here are the actual stats from last year, the ones no one here bothered to look up and what I discovered in less than an hour. There were 40,040 calls last year made to the North Hampton Police Department. Of those, 84 resulted in some kind of use of force. That is 0.002% of calls. Let me say that again. 0.002% of calls resulted in a use of force by our department. Of those 84 cases where use of force was used, 59 were white, 15 were black, eight were Hispanic, one was Asian, and one was Middle Eastern. Even when you combine all four of those minority groups, that means that only 0.29% of those uses of force cases involve someone who was non-white. Of all the 40,040 calls last year, 0.0006% resulted in use of force against a non-white person or any other of any background. This data does not show a pattern of police brutality or discriminatory practices in North Hampton. It's time this city council started behaving responsibly rather than bending to mob mentality. There are serious issues in this country, and Black Lives do matter, but in the North Hampton Police Department is not reflected of the issues we see on a nationwide level. And to Ms. Mayor, your comments about this city not knowing whether or not police, in fact, lower crime, is as ignorant a statement as Donald Trump saying that there are less Corona cases because there's been less testing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jonathan.
Good evening, folks. My name is Jonathan Wright. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, good evening.
Great, good evening. Thanks so much for making this available to a baby somber. I live at 91 Olander Drive in North Hampton. I wanted to comment briefly about the controversy surrounding the roundabout at North King Street. I want you to take your attention to the sign when we enter North Hampton. It says, "North Hampton Settled 1654," which we all know is nonsense. It's the way this has been done, but it's nonsense. So everything about this route has been done meticulously by professionals according to all of the prescribed methodologies. The problem is the ground has shifted under us. You're not in the council chambers, but if you were in the council chambers and you took a timeline from the back of the hall to the front wall, 1654 occupies less than a slice of Wonder Bread, and the duration of automobiles is less than the thickness of a Sacramento wafer. And we are here now proposing to disrupt that entire history over a case for traffic safety. And I think that it's really time, in the current moment, to pause and think about the entire history of what has made this place what it is and find a place in our community that does not only celebrate colonial times, notice slavery in our time, and take anecdotal evidence of traders from Nordic traders and Basque fishermen, but reach back to a time when ice was still in New England and people lived here. So this is not a matter of artifacts being gathered, and we got them all, as I've heard. This is about having a profoundly different sense of place. So I really encourage you to take action, to pause on this well-organized, properly-planned project, but it is, as I said, began, it is on now very different ground as we understand what it meant to have lived here for perhaps 10,000 years. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Mark Devlin.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
I've had a little bit of shaky internet, so I'm hoping I can get through less than three minutes. Good evening, my name is Mark Devlin. I'm the Vice President on the Board of Directors for River Valley Co-op. I'm speaking on behalf of River Valley of 330 North King Street. Council members, over 54,000 people have signed a petition calling on the city of North Hampton and the state of Massachusetts to conduct further study of a rare archaeological site before allowing construction of the roundabout at the intersection of Hatfield Street and Route 5 and 10. The petition shows this is an issue our community cares about. The state site report calls for further assessment and avoiding construction, and now we see that the tribal monitor is objecting to construction without further study and assessment. We know the city did not set out to destroy a rare archaeological site with the roundabout plans, but in the process of planning the project, a rare ancient site eligible for the National Register of Historic Places was discovered. Now what do we do? What is the process for North Hampton City Council to formally consider how we as a community will respond to such a discovery in the path of construction plans? The response so far appears to be inaction by simply deferring to the state. Given that the plan, the state plans have only delayed the construction to start August 6th, this is an urgent matter for action for our city council. We are calling on the city council to take responsibility for the consideration of the preservation of this significant historic site within North Hampton. We're asking you to join with our legislators who responded to our community interests to advocate on our behalf for time and good process to consider the best course of action. This is a complex issue that caught us all by surprise. What are the steps in consideration of the historic preservation of ancient Native American sites in the path of construction projects in North Hampton? Is our community historic preservation process adequate? We are looking to our city council for leadership in addressing this 8,000 to 10,000-year-old archaeological discovery in our community. This decision, the decision to make a roundabout was not intended to destroy an ancient archaeological site, but now we know it will, and we ask now that we know better that we not lose this opportunity to do better. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next is Natalia Muñoz.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Natalia Muñoz. I am your neighbor in Holyoke, and I'm former Chair of the North Hampton Human Rights Commission. I lived in North Hampton for decades. I covered the city for two different newspapers. I know it has flaws. I am a gay Puerto Rican woman who experiences racism and homophobia and misogyny on a daily basis, but I have to say the recent protests against the North Hampton Police have left me dismayed. As a member of the Human Rights Commission, I was impressed when one of Chief Casper's first stops was with the commission after she was appointed five years ago, becoming the first woman and lesbian to occupy the post. She also knows about oppression, and she asked us, "What can the police do better?" We desperately need reform in policing, and Chief Casper has been actively working on that, but you treat her and the police she leads as if they were a bunch of abusers and killers. Some of them may not be outstanding examples of great police officers, but there's a difference between that and being a murderer or being an abusive police officer. In fact, she leads a department of working men and women who show up when a woman is being beaten or a trans person threatened, a synagogue defaced, a person on the brink of dying from a drug overdose, an adult frightened by strange sounds in their home, or a bear or rabid raccoon roaming their street. They are people doing very difficult jobs among the most challenging in this country. Some of the things they do must be done, but most of us wouldn't want to do them. Maybe some of these duties should be given to someone else. That is a discussion worth having. Last month, the city council cut 10% of the police budgets, police department's budget, caving into pressure from a very vocal group to which "defund the police" means "cut the budget if you want to show you are woke." Well, okay, yes, systemic racism and police culture must be dismantled, and it's worth rethinking policing, but do not cut budgets arbitrarily without a plan. Policing needs to be reimagined in our country because of the innumerable killings of unarmed black men and women by police, but it should be done thoughtfully, or we won't succeed in meeting basic needs while also making necessary change. The city council did not research what the cut would mean in terms of personnel and equipment, but to people passionate about police reform, instead of calling North Hampton's elected and appointed officials racist and going to their homes to try to intimidate them, I encourage you to focus on reforming the police in places like Minneapolis and Staten Island and Waller County, Texas, and many others where murderous police officers remain free. Out of the killing of black people in this city, the Black Lives Matter movement was born and gathered strength, and we know their names: George Floyd, Eric Garner, and Sandra Bland. But let's be real, North Hampton is not one of those cities. Of course, city councilors should raise questions. That is part of your fiduciary responsibility.
That is time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Greg Skabiski.
Great, thank you very much. My name is Greg Skabiski. I'm the son of John Skabiski, who I believe some of you know. I'm a resident of Florence. First of all, I would like to thank the city council for your tireless efforts to make these sometimes eight, nine-hour-long meetings possible. It is a lot to ask of anyone. My comments are regarding the recent discovery of an ancient 8,000 to 10,000-year-old Native American settlement at North King and Hatfield Streets in our city. My father was the former owner of this land prior to taking by eminent domain. He is a lifelong preservationist and former trustee of Historic North Hampton. According to the state's 164-page archaeological report on the site, which documents two years of work there, this site is eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places. Certainly, discoveries like this do not happen every day in our city. The site is currently scheduled for full destruction as part of a new traffic intersection. Some weeks ago, I started an online petition which calls for the city, state, and federal governments to take steps to ensure appropriate preservation. This petition has over 54,000 signatures. I considered sharing the Zoom invitation to this meeting with all 54,000 folks and a call for participation, then I learned that the meeting is already extremely long. I've requested that this petition and the state's full archaeological site report be added to the city council record. The state's report recommends preservation of the site and says that it is a, quote, "incredibly rare archaeological discovery," unquote. It is disappointing that the public has been fighting to save this site without any involvement of the city. Some officials have emailed folks saying that they can't comment on the issue due to pending litigation. While it is a fact that my father sued the Massachusetts Department of Transportation over this matter, that lawsuit is only between him and MassDOT. It does not involve the city in any way. Our attorney advised that the city is now restricted from speaking. It would seem to make sense that the city start a process to share information with the public and solicit feedback. Regardless of anything, this National Register Historic Site is in North Hampton. I believe that promoting the site could even draw tourists to our city, which would boost the economy. It would also add a new and very notable dimension to the fine public reputation of our city, which we all enjoy. Thank you again, councilors, for all you do for our city and for your patience and endurance throughout these long meetings which allow the public to voice concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dan Kennedy.
Thank you. So my name is Dan Kennedy. I am a resident of Ward 4 in North Hampton. I wanted to take time to thank you all for being here and continuing to listen to us as we call for further cuts to the police and actual reform or review. I don't actually want to say reform. I don't think that you can reform an institution that is so deeply rooted and based in racism that you'll suddenly be able to fix it. If reforms were possible, then they would have been done five years ago, 10 years ago, 70 years ago, as the civil rights movement in the US was sparked, or even back into the 1900s, the early 1900s. 1906, I believe, was when the first police abolition movement began, when the police used violence to attack the striking labor workers. So I don't think you can reform this, but I do want to say that cutting the budget is the first step. Removing 10%, which is virtually nothing, wouldn't even cover the potential damages that the city will pay out because of police misconduct in Eric Matlock's case, right? That's still $100,000 more than that budget cut, and that doesn't include the previous $140,000, I believe, that the city's paid out in police misconduct or the potential other lawsuits that the city is facing. To say that North Hampton doesn't have a police problem is absurd. In addition, while it's not, while it's true that no one's been murdered in the streets yet, that doesn't mean that it can't happen here or that it won't happen here. We've just been lucky enough that it hasn't happened yet. I think it's really important to think about that fact. Every 28 hours, a black man is killed in the US by a police officer, a security guard, and it happens all over the country, each time in a different city. To say that we don't, we don't have a problem or something we need to focus on is absurd. We also need to look at what the state is doing. The state has S, the bill S2800, which is looking at different reforms that can happen at the state level. We also need to look at that and ways that we can take money from the police and put it into community investment, but those things need to happen simultaneously. So we're looking at you to put pressure on the executive branch to also reinvest in our communities simultaneously as you make these cuts. They cannot happen separately. If you cut money but do not, but treat it as cost-saving measures, it will only cause problems. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next is Jesse Hesenger.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I want to first say that everything that Dan just said, I totally agree with, and I would like to underline. The numbers that were, that were very quickly spouted by Karen Sullivan previously were completely skewed against the real ratio of white to BIPOC that lives in North Hampton. She said some numbers that made you think that there was barely any issues at all, but when you look at the numbers themselves, out of the 84 use of force But when you look at the numbers themselves, out of the 84 use of force that happened in 2019, 13 of them were against black people. That is 15 and a half percent. 15 and a half percent. There is only 3% of black people that live in Northampton. That is a five times attack on black people over any other race in Northampton by police officers. This is not a personal attack on the Northampton Police Department. This is about how the institution of police in the nation works by upholding white supremacy. As Dan also said, just because we haven't had anyone die on video in Northampton doesn't mean that it won't happen tomorrow, or next week, or next year. Reform is merely a Band-Aid placed over a gushing aorta wound that is systemic racism based around police upholding white supremacy. The only way that true change can occur is through abolition and creation of social emergency services. That is why we do need to create social emergency services at the same time that we are defunding the police and create these avenues so that we can make sure that there are no gaps in services and do it in a way that is actually helping the citizens of Northampton rather than harming them. And one other thing that I want to put up while I still have the time is that there were some petitions that went out to the general public that got over 200 signatures. And I just wanted to follow up since two of them, one was sent to the mayor and one was sent to Chief Casper, and neither of them commented on them. The, these petitions demanded that funds that were taken from the police budget be moved towards a new kind of emergency assistance, one that is unarmed, trained to provide care to those in need, and democratically accountable to the community. And that in order to curb white supremacy and police terror, cuts to personnel prioritize, needs to prioritize officers with even alleged records of brutality, harassment, and racial bias, rather than cutting the newest hires first. This, these petitions were submitted before the budget was, for 2020 was over, and there was time for the mayor to have done something about this, yet he did not. I would very much like to hear why.
Thank you. Next is John Skabisky. Hi.
I would like to say that my request tonight is for the City Council and the mayor. I'd like to see them give public notice where the city stands in protecting through a preservation program, an eight to 10,000 year old documented prehistoric Native American site on Hatfield Street. If the city avoids a position and continues in this fashion to remain silent in an effort to preserve local Native American history, such will be its lasting legacy. And this rare opportunity is lost. Over 54,000 petitioners are waiting for the city to announce their stand on preserving Native American history. So far, nothing has been said, not even a committee meeting to discuss the fact that something should be saved or preserved. So I ask, where will the city stand on this issue? And I think it should be made public. The public has said they are interested. So I appeal to you to concern yourself with the issue. This is a Northampton issue. And the, the site, with the road going through the middle of this site, was designed by the city. Somehow they pushed this over to the state. But the city was part of the designing of this thing, so they have some say in modifying it so that the site could be saved and they could improve the intersection. Everything would be solved. Merely a traffic light would take care of it. Thank you for your, for the opportunity of speaking to you.
Thank you. Next is Naomi Francis.
Hi, thank you. My name is Naomi Amy Francis. I live in Northampton, Ward Four. I want to thank all of the City Council members for their continued patience and listening and reflecting on our call to abolish the police, an eventuality that we're wanting to work towards to keep our community safer and healthier. I want to support and underline all that Daniel Kennedy and Jesse Hesenger said. I also want to directly address Karen Sullivan's testimony. Your testimony is coming from public record that is from the police force themselves. It is clear from numerous accounts, both current and past, that the police do not report all of the facts of actions that take place when they write their reports. If you've ever tried to write, to file a report against the police, you will know that it is a bureaucratic nightmare. And furthermore, beyond being incredibly prohibitive paperwork to fill out, it puts a target on you from the very people who are supposed to serve and protect you. When you grow up being someone who has their families and first interaction and continued interaction with the police being one of pure danger, how are you supposed to turn to that force to be the ones to help you when you're in need? This paperwork also goes directly to the police chief, which is a horrible snake eating cycle. In addition, police immunity should be entirely abolished. There is no reason for the police to harm anyone. So having any harm from the police to our citizens, for me, is absolutely unacceptable. There are other ways to serve our community, keep our community safe, and have them healthy. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Mac G.
My name is Mac Godinez of Ward Two in Northampton. I'm calling to seek public response from the mayor regarding the petitions that Jesse Hesenger mentioned. I'm also calling to seek clarity on the appointment process of the proposed commission. I want the mayor and the council to be very clear, not only tonight or any other nights over Zoom, but also publicly over the course of the next several weeks on social media, through physical flyers, and by other, any other creative means that can be determined in both English and Spanish with respect to the appointment and application processes. And I really want the council and the mayor to ensure that there is no police presence on any commission that is formed and no members with any affiliation on any level with the police. Otherwise, it will have no real power. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Elliot.
Hi, my name is Elliot Oberholzer. I live in East Hampton, but I work in Northampton. I am here today to read a statement from the Nipmuck Nation of Massachusetts. I'm not Nipmuck, but their voices aren't being brought in here, so I'm trying to do that. This statement starts, regarding the archaeological site at Hatfield Street in Group Five and Ten, Northampton, Massachusetts, to whom it may concern. This statement is on behalf of the people of the Nipmuck Nation. Nipmuck Nation is one of the tribal communities with kinship ties to the indigenous ancestors of what is now Northampton, Massachusetts. We are aware that excavation of the site in question was conducted over the past two years. We are not at liberty to discuss the artifacts that have been removed from this site, but we want to clarify certain issues. The current issue in the media to stop construction of a roundabout is a matter between a private landowner and the state. It does not involve our tribal community. Greg Sabisty's claim in his petition titled Do Not Destroy the 10,000 Year Old Ancient Village in Northampton to save the site, that he was joining with the Native American community, is false and misleading. His position, his petition does not represent any local Native American tribes in the region, nor any tribal individuals we are aware of, nor did he consult with the two close tribal communities of Nipmuck and Albinaki. Anyone claiming to represent or speak on behalf of the tribal people of the area is unaffiliated in any way with the Nipmuck Nation. I'm going to skip a bit for time. The Sabisky family filed suit in the US District Court in June of this year seeking monetary damages for the loss of all artifacts removed from the site. The suit claims that the artifacts have monetary value and should be returned to their rightful owner, John Sabisky. No tribal group has nor will support this claim. The rightful owners of any and all artifacts are the ancestors themselves, and all artifacts removed from the site should be returned to their earth. The recent petition by Greg Sabisky has contributed to confusion among the public and has spread misinformation, as he is unfamiliar with Section 106, archaeological and preservation practices, and is not working with tribal people of the area. For example, site preservation only occurs if no additional archaeology were to be conducted. The archaeological process is itself a destructive process. Sabisky's petition calls for action to preserve the undisturbed ancient village site. There's no evidence that this is a village site, and through archaeology, disturbance has already occurred. We are grateful for all the allies who have called, messaged emails, and offered to support an action. Thank you all. Given the current information and facts still to be discovered, the Nipmuck Nation is not calling for any action at this time regarding preservation of this site. However, if construction of this site occurs, tribal representatives will participate in monitoring, and if support of the public and our allies is needed for any reason, we will make a request at that time. So I'd like to be completely clear here. Native peoples are still here. They are still speaking. Their nations still have sovereignty. It is not acceptable to erase their voices in the interest of co-opting their legacy. If the City Council is going to take a position, I'd like the petition to be clearly that you will be working with the Nipmuck Nation and will follow their wishes in this matter. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Summer Cable.
Hi, my name is Summer Cable, and I live in Northampton, Ward One. I would also like to express my concern over the recent publicity surrounding the archaeological site on North King Street. I believe that the intentions of those who have signed the Skabisky's petition are good, but ultimately, the attention being brought by the author of the petition and the publicity that was, it was given by River Valley Market have put the site in harm's way. Archaeological surveys conducted by the State Historic Preservation Office are typically kept private in order to protect the site. By circulating the SHIP-O report, the areas of the site that are not expected to be impacted by construction of the roundabout are now vulnerable to looters by so-called looting by so-called amateur archaeologists. I know this is not the City Council's purview, but I really believe it's important for the general public to be made aware of the very real risk archaeological sites face when they're dragged into the spotlight in this way. While most people recognize the importance of keeping this site safe, there are those who put a monetary value on artifacts and who engage in looting archaeological sites for the purpose of selling artifacts. Those people are a danger to cultural and scientific value of archaeological sites, such as the one on North, on King Street. I would ask those with a genuine interest in preserving this site to stop circulating the State Historic Preservation Report and stop publicly assigning a monetary value to artifacts that might still be in the ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rowan.
Hello. I'm on, right? Yeah, okay. Hi, Rowan Lupton, she, they, Ward Six. Apparently, it needs to be explicitly said, the movement toward police abolition is just one aspect of the struggle against systemic racism. From prisons to education to our current political apparatus born out of compromise with the white supremacist Confederacy. I assume all of, I assure all of you, we are looking at the work of anti-racism through a broad lens. The police aren't early and highly visible target of anti-racist work because they're allowed to use force and intimidation against us, the people. Even if it were true, the NPD rarely used force. Easy for a white person to say, not to mention any force against a civilian should be considered excessive, especially by an armed government organization. Overt force is just one of the ways that the police terrorize their communities. If you're not aware of all the ways that police use their position to intimidate, you haven't been listening to the people's testimony in these meetings. You can go look those up on YouTube. A mural is worthless without deep structural change. A lesbian cop is still a cop, and a traitor to the queer movement, no cop's pride. A city that pretends to care about racism that continues to fund an armed occupying force, which is racist by its very structure, is still fundamentally structurally racist. While we're here, many of us calling in, along with our councilors, have unanswered questions of Narcoitz and Casper. From the use of force on teenagers to Casper's decision to continue to employ pigs who we know have harmed our community, we eagerly await the time and place to ask these questions. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next is Alex D.
Good evening. My name is Alex Deschamps. I am a former resident of Northampton and currently live in Sunderland. I agree with everything said by Dan, Jesse, Naomi, Mac, and Rowan. I want to thank the council for listening to the citizens of the city and visitors who have shared their experiences with the Northampton Police Department. It is deeply disappointing that individuals who insist that they've never experienced problems with the department are choosing to ignore the experiences of others. You have heard from academics, activists, and your own constituents who have absolutely done their due diligence, Karen. Defunding the police is the right choice. Working to make all individuals in Northampton feel and be safe is the right choice. Placing focus on upholding the rights and safety of humans through social programs is the right choice. You have done well by the initial 10% cut. Please continue to work with your constituents to defund the police and make them feel safe. With regards to the roundabout, I will also add that listening to the native peoples who have already clearly indicated their desires around the space is absolutely necessary. And I thank Elliot and Summer for speaking up around this topic. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next is DSA Line 13.
Hi, sorry, I want to group account. My name is Annie Wood. I'm a Ward Three resident and a member of Pioneer Valley DSA, UAW, Gold 2322. It's clear to me that this commission is a bureaucratic measure to divert the ongoing movement against the police into committees and meetings rather than real change. Council has thus far ignored the demand for police abolition put forward by the people of color, LGBTQ people, and workers whose rent and labor the city relies on. Northampton has an urgent and violent policing problem. I personally witnessed police brutality here twice, once by officers Nicholas Lamouche and Kevin Cook during a wellness call, and once in June when several children were pepper sprayed during protests by the police. We demand that you defund, disarm, and disstand the Northampton Police Department now. Actions, not commissions. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next is Richard Aslan.
Hello, my name is Richard Aslan. I'm a resident of Northampton. And I'd like to pause at this point and make sure that these two issues that have been discussed extensively, if other people are in line to discuss those issues, because I'm about to discuss something completely different. So maybe I should just pause here and ask if there's anyone else who wishes to comment on those other two issues.
So, Richard, we don't respond during public comment, but also, that's not how public comment works. You, you may speak on any topic, so go right ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to not be out of order.
I appreciate it.
I'd like to thank the City Council for providing the opportunity to address a number of important community issues. My comments center on a small neighborhood in Village Hill, the old Hospital Hill site. At this time, Kent Pecoy and Sons Construction, the developer chosen by Mass Development for the Northview subdivision in Village Hill, has begun the process of liquidation of all of its business operations. They had, Pecoy has abandoned the Northview site and all work is stopped, leaving the residents in legal limbo with a partially completed infrastructure that is causing flooding and property damage. We respectfully ask the City of Northampton to step up and complete the project with the active participation of the Northview homeowners. At present, the residents will not be members of a homeowners association until the last lot is conveyed. Until that time, Kent Pecoy controls the homeowners association. The existing homeowners currently have no rights to the common property. Furthermore, we are obligated by covenants to nothing more than maintenance of completed infrastructure, including the road, the rainwater system, and associated detention ponds. None of these have been completed. For the past two years plus, the Higgins Way Road has become flooded and impassable due to the non-operable rainwater system. This happens routinely with every passing rainstorm, possibly including this evening. Recent storms have exposed the much greater threat to property damage is now occurring both to existing homes and still unsold lots. In addition, there are uncontrolled storm water releases flowing down to the Mill River. Our residents have physically toiled to build crushed stone diversions and dams to mitigate the uncontrolled rain and mud flows with very limited success. with very limited success and without assistance from Pecoy. We are, the residents have brought these issues before appropriate city personnel on multiple occasions, but nothing has so far been done. Among the issues we have raised are infrastructure being built outside of the plan specifications, occupancy permits issued for dwellings that do not comply with the stormwater plan and non-compliance by the developer that has not been addressed or enforced by the city. In addition, the city has continued to release Pecoy from its performance guarantee thereby reducing the available funds held to ensure the project's completion. All despite the common knowledge that Pecoy is in financial difficulty. So the residents were never part of the decisions about planning, funding or developer selection and we have no responsibility for anything but maintenance of a completed project, which includes this, the fully functioning engineer certified stormwater system. Yet city officials have suggested that if the city has not retained sufficient funds to complete the project, the residents of Northview should pay for it.
That's time. Do you want to finish your sentence? Okay.
Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you. Next is Orianna R.
Hi, my name is Orianna Riley, I live in Ward 3. And I am speaking about the resolution to the, about, for the Police Review Commission. And I want to echo the words of Dan, Jessie, Amy, Rowan, Alex and Annie. I feel like this, the council has continued to show that you are missing the point of everything that the hundreds of people who've shown up to your meetings to say, disarm, defund and disband the police have said. I, we clearly told you with at least 120 people on the call at the last meeting that we do not support the commission and you continued to go ahead with it and give yourselves a pat on the back for supposedly doing something good for police reform. Again, we don't want police reform. We want the police to be abolished and we want the money to be spent on things that will actually help our community and reduce crime. Because again, the police do not reduce crime. Further, since you're insisting on going ahead with this commission that none of us want or ask for, or that the purpose is useful, I do just want to bring up that nothing in the commission's description or how it's going to be appointed bans cops or police from being on it, which is a huge problem. So I'm going to read some criteria that I think should be added if you're going to have this commission. This comes from people in Chicago working on an elected accountability council. So, an individual shall not be eligible to join this commission if they have ever served as a law enforcement officer, had a family member, including the spouse, domestic partner, partner to a civil union or any of the following, whether by blood, marriage or adoption, parent, son, daughter, stepson, stepdaughter, brother, sister, aunt, uncle, niece, nephew, grandparent, et cetera. I'm going to skip that. Who has ever served as a law enforcement officer or who has ever been employed by the district attorney or who has ever been convicted of bribery, embezzlement, extortion, perjury or other conviction related offenses or fails to disclose any personal, professional or financial conflict of interest. Those are the main, the main things. You, it sounds like you're going to appoint cops and people related to cops to this commission who then are of course going to say, there's no problem in Northampton, we don't need to do anything about it. And you all can continue to pat yourselves on the back and think you're doing something good for the community. We aren't, fuck the police, bye.
Next is Sasha.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Sasha, I live in East Hampton. You can never make a plan to create alternatives to the police unless you first defund the police. You can discuss and deliberate changes to policing till the end of time. But until you take their funding, the situation's not going to change. Look at what's already happened so far. You took $880,000 from the police budget that was proposed this year. Where's that money going to go? Why hasn't the mayor come forward to help allocate that money as intended toward alternatives to policing? You haven't taken enough money away. Change police, it's still business as usual. Until you take their funding and start funding alternatives to police, there's no realistic path to alternatives to police. You don't need a plan to reduce the police budget. When you reduce the police budget, only then can you actually make a plan because only then do you have the power to make change happen. The police budget in 2013 was like $4.8 million. Last year it was $6.7 million. Why do you think that happened? Why was the plan to keep giving the police more and more millions of dollars? Reform is never going to be a solution to the issues inherent in policing. You can't fix a system that isn't broken. Police were never designed to protect black people or poor people or undocumented people. Police are doing exactly what they were meant to do and that's not going to change. What needs to change is the way that we utilize police in our community. Yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Gillian Love, who's next?
Hi, Gillian Love, Ward 4. I am honestly incredibly disappointed with the city council and their decision to try and move forward with this committee that honestly, or this commission that, as many people have stated, is focused a lot more on reform that many of us know already doesn't work. There's a lot of information out there that supports that. Police reform is ineffective and it does nothing to protect the lives of BIPOC. I also want to say that I am a person of color and I've noted from attending various meetings that it feels as if our voices honestly don't matter. Continuously, I've heard even some of the council members listen to two hours of statements from the public who have expressed that they do not trust the police. They want to defund the police, they do not support this commission. We don't like the, the goals of it or the real, the lack of any sort of accountability that would come from it. And yet then there are city council members who will speak about other people who aren't choosing to be present, who haven't been putting in the work, kind of elevating their voices more. And those are the people who do support the police, who do, and like that shows where you stand and who you truly want to listen to. You have to do better, people are showing up for a reason and we matter. As it was stated by others as well, that this commission, it just, it's truly pointless. It doesn't, it does nothing to address any of the real issues that are coming from systemic oppression enacted through the system of police. We don't need it, it's not, it's not healthy to BIPOC. It hasn't been healthy to me personally. I myself have actually been assaulted. I may have mentioned this before, it was not by a Northampton police officer, but that doesn't mean that it couldn't happen here. And that doesn't mean that even without brute force being enacted against the people of this city, that people aren't still being harmed. I really, we wanted a select committee because we felt as if our voices and our efforts would be emphasized more as if it would be shown that what we said and what we cared for actually mattered to not only the city council but to this entire town. Because police reform, this commission, a study on, on information that we've already been able to gather for you without being paid, without having extra support behind us, just us as community members. We have a lot of information out here, there's so many resources that we've been able to tap into that you haven't even attempted to. And we have no faith that this commission will do that. There's no reason to be pushing this forward other than to, yeah, to try and pat yourselves on the back and act as if you're doing something good when you're really not. It's inaction, we need real action. Thank you, defund the police.
Thank you. Okay, that I, okay, Ezekiel Baskin.
Hi, I just wanted to speak briefly about reallocation. As has been mentioned before, the mayor hasn't set any orders yet or recommended any orders to be taken up around reallocating from the stabilization fund towards any of the sort of asks or demands around social services, restorative justice in the schools, et cetera. Yet there is an order today, 20.090, to appropriate $90,000 from stabilization for health and safety improvements to the treasurer collector's office. That is definitely important to make the office more safe, but I think it's worth questioning the mayor on why he is able to create this order to move money from the stabilization fund. Yet he has not yet chosen to recommend any orders reallocating money towards the social services needs of the city. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, seeing no further public comment, we will close public comment and take the roll and convene, please.
Dwight.
Hold up, wait one second.
Here.
Counselor Foster.
Hold on, let me find him. I'm going to ask people to turn off your video, I can't find the council, I can't see the council, so please turn off your video.
I'm here, thank you.
Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
Counselor Labarge.
Hold on, gotcha.
Here.
Counselor Mayori.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor Quinlan.
Here.
Counselor Shara.
Here.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, okay, we are convened. And the first item is the announcement of a public hearing. This is 20.063 National Grid Verizon New England Poll Petition for Hebert Avenue. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, August 20th, 2020 at 7:05 PM on the petition of National Grid Verizon New England to erect poles and wires upon, along, under or across one or more public ways. That's poll petition number 28701070. The hearing will be held via remote participation. Please see the agenda for the August 20, 2020 city council meeting for instruction for accessing that hearing. That is the announcement for that hearing. Are there any updates from committee chairs? Counselor Labarge.
Yes, I just want to announce that we are having a city service meeting on July 20th on a Monday at 4 o'clock PM and it will be virtual zooming.
Thank you. Any other, I'm trying, okay, hold on, I can't see all of the council. Hold on, I'm just making sure I can see everybody, cause like, give me a sec, everyone. I still can't see some people. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, okay. I got everybody. Any other, any other committee chair announcements? Seeing none, any one minute announcements? Oh, sorry, sorry, I got distracted. Counselor Jarrett.
Hello, I'm going to be holding a Ward 5 gathering on Zoom. It'll be this Sunday, July 12th from 4 to 5 PM. And it'll be an opportunity for questions and answers to hear concerns and ideas. You know, before COVID-19, I had planned monthly gatherings around the ward. So I've really missed the opportunities for us to meet. So, and I'm asking people to register in advance and then you'll receive the Zoom link. You can do that on my website, Facebook page or by emailing or calling me. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other one minute announcements? Okay, seeing, I'm going to tell you guys what's distracting me. Zoom has yet again changed some settings and it looks like I've lost the ability to make the council co-hosts. So, that brief time we had with that setting is now gone. So, we're just going to go on like this. And I guess if I have to mute you, I'm just going to watch and look for people. But right now I can see the council, so we're okay. Okay, Mr. Mayor, any communications? Oops, sorry. Hold on, whoops. All right, hold on.
I have no communications this evening.
Okay, thank you, hold on, I need to do one other thing because things keep popping up in my view, okay. So, um, then moving on, we have resolutions. So first up is the withdrawal of 20.076, a resolution establishing a select committee on legislative approaches to public safety. The process note is that the sponsors have requested to withdraw this resolution but have asked to give a brief explanation, so I'm going to give the, give them the courtesy of having the floor. But it's being withdrawn, so there'll be no discussion on this resolution. So, Counselor Jarrett.
Thank you. So Counselor Mayori and I decided to withdraw this, so several reasons. First, given that we now, we introduced this before we knew the scope of the Northampton Policing Review Commission. And now that we know the scope and have had the opportunity to give comment and see the, how it's changed, we're not ready to ask for a select committee at this time. And I want to say it's at this time. We will be asking one or more of our standing city council committees to explore the legislative options that we have. Once we have a clear, also, once we have a clear idea of the makeup of the commission, we may propose a select committee to fill in the gaps or to specifically work on the legislative possibilities. And it, just want to reiterate that, that it isn't exactly clear to me what our legislative options are. The pesticide reduction ordinance made it clear that there is some leeway to set policy that the executive branch carries out. So becoming more informed and with independent legal opinions will help us carry out any recommendations from the commission or other action that the council wants to decide upon. So that's, I'll turn it over to Counselor Mayori for her viewpoint on it.
Thank you, Counselor Jarrett, yeah. I mean, I will, this was a tough decision and I really hear the concerns of residents and I share them. Since the formation of the joint commission seemingly moving forward, this seemed like the best way to stagger our efforts and we just, we still see this as something we can pursue in the future. If, we wanted to actually clarify a lot of the language and the mission in the council select committee resolution anyway. So the good thing is, yeah, if we decide we want to move forward, we can simply submit a resolution to form another select committee or, you know, another avenue as Counselor Jarrett has outlined. I still think it's critical, as Counselor Jarrett has said, that the council explore the range of our legislative options and our role here regarding transforming our public safety system in Northampton. And because of that, I will also be pursuing an independent council role here, forging specifically a path forward for the council. And I, I would look forward to talking to residents more as the commission starts taking shape. I think that we can come back and revisit. come back and revisit what would be a good supplement to the joint commission. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so then moving on to 20.096, a resolution regarding the Northampton Policing Review Commission. I will read the resolution. So in City Council, July 9th, 2020, upon the recommendation of City Council Gina Luis Shara and Mayor David J. Narkowitz, our 20.096 resolution regarding the Northampton Policing Review Commission, whereas on June 8th, 2020, in the letter with the revised order for the FY 2021 general fund budget, Mayor Narkowitz, quote, "committed to working with the city council to address the larger systemic issues of institutional racism and bias laid bare once again by the tragic killing of George Floyd by Minneapolis police officers on May 25th, 2020," end quote. And whereas, at the June 10th special meeting of the city council to continue deliberation on the FY 2021 general fund budget, the city council asked Council President Shara and Mayor Narkowitz to bring to the next meeting and before the second vote on the FY 2021 general fund, a plan for both branches to work together to bring about meaningful change to policing and public safety. And whereas, on June 18th, Mayor Narkowitz and Council President Shara presented the Northampton Policing Review Commission, a joint commission of both branches of government, quote, "to study these complex issues and recommend reforms to the current organizational and oversight structures, municipal funding allocations, and policies and ordinances that together can transform how the city delivers policing services while ensuring community safety equitably and justly for all," end quote. And whereas, the discussion on the commission was continued to a special meeting of the city council on June 23rd, where additional feedback from the council and the public was heard and discussed, and then incorporated into the commission document. Therefore, be it resolved that the city council and mayor shall create the Northampton Policing Review Commission with the process, composition, and timeline delineated in the commission document.
Move approval.
Motion has been made by Councillor Dwight.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councillor Labarge. I will just, I don't, I'll go first, that's okay. I don't have much to add. The resolution outlines, you know, the process that we've gone through and the discussion that we've had. And the commission document has actually been updated to reflect the feedback. And I know I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure the mayor would as well. A couple of things I'll note that have been updated. Instead of the usual multi-member body application, we're asking for those that are interested to send a letter of interest to either the mayor or the city council. Those, those letters of interest can be mailed, or they can be emailed. If someone cannot submit that way, then we can receive that information verbally, by phone, in person, from a safe distance. However, someone needs to relay their interest to us. And along those lines, actually, of providing access to those who may need it, I've spoken to Northampton Open Media. Again, true heroes for our community for connection and access. And NOM has said that they can provide support in terms of their networks and computer access at their facility at 33 Holly Street for at least two members of the commission in a safe and accessible way. That would also be along with staff support on site for them. So if that's needed by anyone, they're able to offer that access, and I'm extremely grateful to them. And other thing I'll note, since the process to today has added three weeks from when we first presented the commission on June 18th, we've adjusted the timelines a bit. And because of that, I also would respectfully request two readings tonight to be able to hit these new timelines and these new deadlines that we've put in there. They, we're asking that the letters of interest be received by Friday, August 14th, and that the appointment process will now be completed on or before September 3rd, and the commission shall convene its first organizational meeting no later than September 24th. The preliminary report deadline remains at on or before December 17th, and the final report now is on or before March 18th, 2021, which gives almost two months before the mayor must submit the budget to the council. We've also added language that the commission may request an extension, but again, it's extremely important to me that we have information from them before we need to make decisions on next year's 2021 budget. So again, this is an ambitious timeline that we've laid out, but, you know, we feel the urgency of the moment and the movement really call for it. And if anyone has any questions, or Mayor Narkowitz, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add.
I know you've covered it quite completely, and again, thank you for all the feedback that we received, and I think we've tried to incorporate it, so thank you.
Councillor Mayori, hold on.
Yeah, so you just were saying about the letter of interest. So how are we going to ascertain the seats that were meant for black folks, people of color, and most impacted? Is there going to be any kind of letter of interest is open, and we might not know that?
That's true. I mean, we discussed it, and I think we're hoping that, you know, what we really want is the narrative from people as to what their interest is and why this matters to them, and I'm hoping that they're going to divulge that information as, you know, in that, because it's pertinent to this discussion we're having.
I suppose we could also just follow up with, I mean, probably people give, I was just curious about that part.
Obviously, we'll have to ask for contact information.
Yeah, yeah. And so, and I had a resident ask me, well, a resident who stressed the importance of a chair, the chair of of a commission like that, and asked me questions about how that, there will be a chair, how that will happen. And also asked me how the councillors will be chosen to be on.
Um, so, you know, we have it in the document that, that the chair will be chosen by the body themselves, and that they can't be councillors, actually. We wanted them to be residents. And, and we left it open whether they wanted to be, have one chair or two chairs, co-chairs on it. And in terms of the councillors, actually, I'm, we're still trying to determine with the Attorney General's Office whether, what's allowable under open meeting law in terms of who, how the council could choose their appointees. I had a conversation with the solicitor today, and we're checking with the AG's office. Because there's a possibility that any subgroup of a council who would be doing this would be considered a subcommittee, and then would be subject to open meeting law themselves.
Right.
So we're trying to get clarification on that tomorrow.
Thank you. I just asked, or put out a few other things. I do, I do agree with residents that a lot of what's on there has been researched, so I do really hope that will be going very quickly for review, doing a literature review, really getting on, you know, the task and the action ahead of us, and making things happen and tailoring our city. And and I do, I think there is a time to work with the police on this, and once we have, once, once our plan is completed, I think we'll have to work very closely with the PD if we're going to implement changes and alternatives. But I don't, I agree with some of the speakers that I don't think that this commission is the place for police officers themselves. I think the community really needs to set our agenda outside of that paradigm, and then go with our agenda and work out the things as we need to do with other city departments. So I'll just put that out there. Okay, I guess that's, that's it for me. Thank you.
Sure. Um, I, I can't speak to your latter point, but the earlier one, which now is flown out of my head, which was about, sorry, help me out.
I'm sorry, I threw a lot at you at once. I was talking about staying less time on like liter-
Yes.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you for the refresher. What I would say, so of course, this is going to be an, as we're, this, this body itself will be subject to open meeting law. These will all be public meetings. And so even if someone's not on the commission, they will have public comment. They will, as you know, we've said they have to have a minimum of three public hearings. But I am sure that they will gladly receive information and any research that's been done, and that, and people should feel free to share that with them, both verbally at the meetings, but also to forward information to them.
And so is there a policy yet about the police serving on this commission? Or people in law enforcement at all?
I've unmuted the mayor because, as you know, we can't give directives to the
Yeah, it was an inquiry, yeah.
It was not my intention to appoint anyone from the police department on the commission. I mean, typically, when I do reviews of a, of a city agency, I generally, it's not done by the agency itself. It's done by an external review, whether it's a consultant or it's a committee. So it was not my intention to appoint anyone from the police department to serve. I don't know, I can't speak for the council.
I mean, it was certainly not my intention. Also, I recognize I would, I couldn't ask them to do it without asking the executive branch whether that was okay for them to serve in that capacity, but it was not my intention. Councillor Jarrett.
Just something that is direct, sort of directly related. The city council shall appoint nine members by a review process to be determined by each point of authority. You mentioned a little bit about how you're trying to figure out how the councillors that will be two of those nine members, but then how will we determine that process? Would that be at our August 20th meeting? Did you speak to that?
Um, I may have, I may not have been clear. I, what I was speaking to was how the council would appoint the process for, that the, for the council appointing the additional members, not the council members. Right? So, because that's the question that we need clarification on. Because it's possible that any subset of the council doing that work would have to do it, would be considered a subcommittee and would be subject to open meeting law.
Right, so then, separate from that, the review process, I mean, the, how will we, so, okay, and then the two that are chosen will be the ones who choose, who review the
That's not Not
We don't know that either.
We don't, right, that's, that is the question that needs to be answered, whether that, whether that process is even possible. So, which I wasn't aware of, but have learned potentially would make that process subject to open meeting law, which, again, I just, you know, I believe in doing things publicly and openly, but when you're asking people to give you narrative letters of interest about why they would like to serve on this sort of commission that may have personal information in it, it doesn't feel appropriate to then divulge those and discuss them in a, in a public meeting.
But the nine, or the seven remaining, we will vote on those?
No.
No, okay. And I'm just trying to get clarity on the process, so.
There's no way that we can do that process without having it be an open, you know, going through person by person and voting on them. Which doesn't feel comfortable to me to do that process in public about people and difficult stories they may tell, things like that. And it's just, it's not how these sorts, it's not how commissions are chosen, but, and for those kinds of reasons.
Well, I'm thinking, you know, our usual process is a referral to city services. I mean, in terms of how commissions are chosen, you know, if you're talking about the, say, the, the Transportation and Parking Commission, or something like that. And then people have individual conversations, report back, and then there is a confirmation or a vote by the city council. So there's an opportunity there perhaps for individual, one-on-one discussion, and then a public, a public part as well, but you're not, you're thinking we would not do a similar process.
Um, if we were to do a process like that, that would, I, I can't even imagine how many weeks that would tack on at this point to do that process, or whether we even could do that kind of process.
Okay, yeah.
Um, Councillor Nash.
Yeah, I had to mute myself. My dog was farting.
Okay.
My apologies. So will we, so essentially, you'll put together the, the slate of candidates, and will we vote on the slate? Rather than going through the particulars of which, which individual, but is, I, I think, in my mind, it would appropriate, be appropriate for council to endorse the slate that is to be appointed. That's my thought on that. And I think that kind of crosses with Councillor Jarrett's concerns.
I mean, certainly, whatever process we can do, the people that are chosen, we're going to be presented as, as the appointees on August 20th. Oh, sorry, councillor, oh, I see councillor Dwight and then councillor Labarge.
I would, Councillor Jarrett actually referred to the pesticide, which is actually a reasonable example. The council president made the appointments while the appointees were not subject to review by the council. Partly for the same reason that we're discussing now, the timeline was way, way, way too narrow. And as a result, there was already intense pressure for them to generate a voluminous, detailed study and report in a very short time, and that's the case here as well. Under our rules, council president would ultimately be the person who is doing the appointments. Now, what councillor Shara is offering at this point is participatory selection, but at the same time, trying to keep in mind how we have to expedite this in order to actually start to realize it. In, in the past, we have not approved, we didn't approve members of the pesticides committee. They were formed by, as a director of the council president, Ryan O'Donnell, at the time. When I created the, when I was council president and Council O'Donnell was vice president at the time, we created a similar commission to study the downtown environment and what it meant for the public and what it meant for the businesses, and so on. Again, we didn't, the council did not have an opportunity to, it was called a council appointment, but in fact, it was the council president and vice president in that case that made the selections. I, I think in, in, in both those cases, in all those cases, actually, all those committees generated amazing work and also had amazing participants. That's not to say that there will be some people that might get appointed who would be, people would find objectionable for a variety of reasons. You heard tonight, people just object to the existence or even the premise of having this commission. So I don't, I want to be careful in getting bogged down. If there, I imagine if there is an appointee who is so egregiously failing or coming up short, that the council will not be bashful about challenging that appointment. But beyond that, I think we're going to have to invest an aspect of trust here, I think. And, and if we continue, if we expand the vetting process by, by doing meetings, especially in this abbreviated meeting schedule that we have for the summer, this, we're never going to come close to the timelines that are already so abbreviated that, that we run the risk of actually rendering this thing moot, and I, for one, would like to avoid that.
Councillor Labarge.
Yes, thank you, Councillor Dwight. I'm going to echo what you said about the pesticide committee, the commission, right down the line, and the others. I also want to know, Councillor President Gina Luis Shara, in regards to the mayor, is appointing somebody from the Human Rights Commission, correct, mayor?
Yes.
Right? How about, I haven't heard anything about, like, the Commission on Disabilities or people with disabilities. And I think that they should be looked at very, very carefully here, of being involved in this new commission that we are putting in place. So I have concerns about that, that we at least look So I have concerns about that, that we at least look at the Commission on Disabilities to be part of this police commission. Just an idea that I'm, you know, bringing forth to you, but I, I think it's very valuable here.
I would certainly welcome people with disabilities to apply for, you know, the council positions or for the mayoral positions and would want to know their experience and, and would take their experience into account, just as I would other, other groups. So, you know, I, I very much welcome applying.
I appreciate that.
Counselor Mayory, then Counselor Foster.
I mean, there are nine counselors and nine appointments. Maybe each counselor could appoint one, or you'd have a final appointing authority over one seat? Just an idea.
Thank you. Counselor Foster and then Counselor Dwight.
Thank you. You know, I, I'm hearing from, from public comment tonight as well that, that, you know, there are people, as Counselor Dwight mentioned, who objected to the formation of the commission. And I just want to state again, I, I think that this is a process that has really some good potential and yet also recognized that the work, I think, the commission will have some work to do to help rebuild trust, you know, with the community as well as to consider this research and make recommendations. And then, you know, the, the question around accountability has been, you know, what is the accountability of the commission? And as a joint mayoral, city council commission, I really see that the accountability is, is, is us and, and our response to our constituents. And, and that's, that's a process I'm committed to. I wanted to clarify, I guess, a couple of things. One, you know, with, with the City Services Committee, when we confirm appointments, usually what we're doing is we're confirming an appointment that the mayor has brought to us and we're saying, yes, this is somebody we would support on a commission. It's, it's a slightly more complete process than fully vetting applications in an open meeting. It, it is true that we'll take an application, we'll look at it, we'll have an individual phone call and then we'll report back to the committee. But I certainly understand and appreciate the, the privacy concerns and I would have a very hard time in a public, open meeting, you know, really kind of discussing someone's story, as Counselor Shera alluded to. You know, one thing I have heard really some great interest from Ward 2, people who are interested in serving, and that's been really exciting. I've, I've had several people contact me who are ready to be involved and I, and I look forward, you know, to, to, to outreach to people who are interested as well as to helping shepherd applications through or from people who are interested. And so I, I wanted to clarify one piece, the letter of, of interest. You know, there are people who are comfortable with me as a counselor who might want to send that to me and then is that something I would forward on to council? Or would people need to send that directly to, you know, the city council email or council president? And just thinking, you know, a part of that question is, is I recognize that submitting a letter of interest for some folks will be a barrier and I'd be glad to have a phone call and, and help somebody through that letter. So just wanted to, to verify that process or, or make sure I'm thinking along lines that makes sense.
Um, sure, I mean, if people wanted to give that information to you, but then it would have to get to me. You know, what the mayor and I very, very briefly talked about today, but is that, you know, we will have a webpage on the city website that will be devoted to the commission, that will have all the information, that will be, you know, directly linked to either the mayor's side or our side, if people want to apply to one or the other. And give any other information would be in English and in Spanish. And, and so, I'm not sure if that's, if I'm answering your question, but certainly if that's, however, however someone wants to apply, if there's some kind of barrier, we want to help them get over that barrier. So if it's that they feel comfortable telling the story to you and then you relay it to me, I'm fine with that, but we'll have to get the information somehow.
No, that, that makes sense. So that's something that I, as a counselor, can offer to Ward 2 to help people with the application process and that, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, and again, if people have, you know, technology barriers, Northampton Open Media has offered help for people serving on the commission, but I'm sure would provide help during the application process. You know, however people need to relay their story to us, we will find a way to, to get it. Counselor, I see Counselor Dwight and then Counselor Labarge.
So actually, to Council Mayor's suggestion about individual counselors forwarding recommendations, that actually is the process by which we actually did the Charter Commission, for instance. There were, we also did that with the committee that came up with the formula to assess stormwater management and, and evaluation. So it, it's not out of the realm of, that's not unprecedented. I, I just want to reiterate that, of course, under our rules, council rules, it is the, the, it is the sole duty of the council president, I'm sorry, the council president is the sole person to make committee appointments for, of the council, not the council in total. It's, but the fact is, I think, I like, but I think that's worth considering is having recommendations coming from individual counselors. That's a possibility. But at the same time, I don't want to serve as a disqualifier for people who, for instance, don't know the council or don't feel comfortable contacting the council. I don't want them to be a disqualifier for someone to be eligible to serve on this committee. The, the whole idea of this commission is not to have preconceived ideas and preconceived objectives other than either reform, as some people said they don't want, or actual systemic change that is quantifiable and actual. And in order to actually, to do that, we need, we need the education that everyone suggests we should get. And I would appreciate in any of those people who, who feel that they are unique holders of unique information should be, I would encourage them to, to reach out to a counselor, reach out to the council president, reach out to the administrative assistant, Laura Kretzler. Indicate your interest in any way and that would be, that would be honestly greatly received. And then hopefully, hopefully we can look forward to the, the hard work this committee is going to do, this commission is going to do, and hopefully it will serve us well.
To, sort of to that, sorry, Counselor Labarge, I see, went quickly. There are nine appointments for the council, but that takes into account that two of those are counselors that are being appointed, so there really are seven additional ones. And if, even if I take myself out of the equation for choosing someone, it still leaves one person out. I've thought of this, I've thought of every iteration, believe me. So that's my concern. I'll be very honest, my, another concern is that if, if there are, you know, if, if, if a counselor puts forward a great candidate, but then another counselor puts forward a candidate who's a person of color and has an amazing lived experience, and I don't, you know, I, I don't, I don't want to have to feel like we need to fit into ward slots necessarily if there are, if there are going to be applicants who have more important, relevant experience and/or if there, if it's going to be the difference between having another person of color on the commission. That's one of my concerns. Counselor Labarge, you've been waiting patiently.
That's fine, thank you. As you know, Counselor Shera, I have been working with several people in Ward 6 who are professional social workers, and we've been doing a tremendous amount of research. And they can't wait until the applications come out, because we're talking about this a lot. And I think we're going in the right direction. We did hear people ask about having a commission put in place, if not, another committee being put in place. I think this is the beginning of what we've been hearing through many, many budget hearings. I also feel that we're looking at a change here that we have heard many, many people say. I would like to have some information clarified of the phone calls that I've been getting and hearing from people. Is that, why did we go ahead at from the 15%, then down to the 10%? And also, why was that decision made first before even having a plan put in place? I'm also hearing difference of, of figure, and I'd like you, Counselor Shera, tonight, right now, if you can possibly, come out with the amount of, from the police department, how many of the training police officers are going to be not coming to Northampton? I'm getting different figures on that, which I really think this needs to be explained to the public. And exactly how many police officers, Counselor Shera, okay, are also leaving the police department? It's out there and it's not the right figures.
Thank you, Counselor Labarge. I'm, I'm not sure why I would be the person at this moment to be able to answer that question. But I, but, but first, I, I need us to be very clear that right now, what's on the floor is this resolution for a commission. So we're not talking about the budget, we're not talking about passed votes. What we're talking about is this resolution.
I understand that, but.
Not.
I, I know where you're coming at, but it is a commission here. But this is being brought up of why are we going into this? With how many police officers that we've already gotten rid of versus putting in a commission? I mean, it's out there of why we're doing this when we already went and took police officers off their jobs. So I just want to get it clarified somehow, why we're doing this commission? Do you know where I'm coming at? Because we're saying we jumped at it too quick, but I don't feel we did because we heard voices out there telling us to put something in place.
Okay. Counselor, Counselor Dwight?
We have to be very careful. This is not an agenda item and we can't discuss this at this point. I would recommend that the counselor have any requests that she make them directly to the mayor outside, in, in, in the form of an email or a phone request. It's not, it is out of order as a discussion here on this agenda, because it is not an agenda item. That means the public never had an opportunity to know that this would be discussed. And we, and I think we have to be very careful about abiding by the letter and the spirit of open meeting law. Insofar as we know, the level of scrutiny. So I would just caution everyone, as we proceed to discuss any of these things, we make sure they're pertinent and relevant to the items that we're addressing and not, not any more than that.
Thank you. Counselor Jarrett.
Thank you. So going back to the question, so I'm, I'm, here's my concern around the appointment process is not what, I don't, you know, is, is how, is, is what? A, a lack of clarity on what it will be. And I hear that you are talking with the Attorney General's office and hopefully we'll have that clarity. But it's, when it says that the review process will be determined by each appointing authority, I'm hearing now that that essentially means the council president will decide that review process. Is that correct?
I don't know, the Attorney General will tell me. I, I, you know, I mean, I'll, you know what I had proposed last time? Which was that I would, I, in conjunction with the two counselors that were, would be chosen for the commission, would, would complete that review process and pick the appointees. I have, am being told that that is not, potentially not possible. So, or probably not possible. So that's the information I have.
And how will the two members be chosen?
I will choose them.
Okay, that, that is, that I needed clarity on.
Yes.
Okay, that, that helps clarify. And I guess I just want to give a comment that I'm so glad that now the council is voting on this. I think in the future, it needs to be clear from the beginning of the process that, you know, that, that we will vote to establish something like this. You know, with the select committee, we have a process. And to refer to what Counselor Dwight said, yes, the council president appoints standing committees and appoints select committee members. But it's not clear when, for joint commissions, there's nothing in our rules about that. So I think it's fair to, 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 to talk about this and to, to have an understanding. And, yeah, so that, just to those points, thank you.
Sure, Counselor Dwight?
Sorry. Okay. So just to be clear, actually, the rule is, and I'll read it actually. The, the president shall appoint all members of committees of the city council, whether special or standing. The president shall have the same powers to vote upon measures coming before the city councils and the other members of the city council. The president shall perform any other duties consistent with the offices established by charter, ordinance, or other voting of the council. So, but in fact is, all committee appointments that are, come under the aegis of being council appointments are by our rules and that, those rules are subject to change, but at the beginning, when we convene for the first time each year when we assemble. But right now, those are the rules that we agreed on and voted on. That is the, those are the conditions by which we have done all previous appointments, just to be clear. Oh, I'm sorry, and I'm getting a correction. It's the charter, I'm sorry, it's not the rule, it's not, that's the charter and even bigger, that's even more, that, that carries more authority than our rules. So that is, that's actually the language from the charter. So, just, so, that said, I think the council president is, is working very hard to try and be as inclusive and to solicit input from as many, possibly, many avenues as possible. The other, and also to the point about, you're right, and actually, the development of this committee was, has been fast, but you'll, you'll remember the, the impetus for this as it developed. It's, it's, it's unusual. It is in response to a, a public outcry and also prolonged debate and discussion on other issues relative to the issue of policing in the city of Northampton. Normally, these things percolate longer, they come of the sponsorship of counselors or recommendations of counselors, or they're usually by citizen petition and so on and so forth. So this, the, we are, as I said, we're in extraordinary times, moving in an extraordinary timeline with an extraordinary amount of responsibility and, and, and pressure here. So, so I just wanted to be, I did want to be clear that actually there, there's really not any ambiguity here as to who is the appointing authority ultimately for committees.
Jarrett.
Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, but I, I didn't think to look in the charter for that, I was just looking at our rules. So that, that's, that is the sort of clarification that, that I feel like I needed to understand the process. So thank you both for that.
Thank you. I mean, I'm, I'll just say as an aside, you know, I accept the responsibility because it's my responsibility, but I'm a collaborative person and I like to work collaboratively. So I don't necessarily, while I accept it and honor it, I don't relish it and I would rather do this with other people and, and have a conversation. I just may legally not be able to. Counselor Quinlan? Got it? Is it, is it popping up and saying, "Ask unmute"?
There it is.
Okay.
Well, I just, I wanted to just say that, that like, like all of the. Well, I just, um, I wanted to just say that, that like, like all of the counselors, you know, I've received comments from, from people and a couple of really very thoughtful emails specifically from people, kind of challenging the idea of the commission concerned about the future of the commission and enacting what the commission's findings may be. Of course, there was one, uh, person that, that was very forceful in their email, really assertive language used to, to say that they, they've already given us the information, we heard some people say that tonight, and I feel like that's true. We do have a lot of information, but we don't know how that information applies to the city of Northampton specifically and how we do that. And that's what I'm looking forward to this commission doing and being. Uh, I'm really, uh, you know, the other thing that I would say, and I, and I wrote this to everyone that, that, that asked me about this and questioned the, the value of this commission is that, you know, I wouldn't dream that, that any of us should be trusted blindly. I would, you know, think that accountability is going to be greatly important in this. You know, really six, uh, and then, you know, seven counselors, uh, were very comfortable with it, with a budget cut of some sort for the police department. And I think that should show that, that the, the idea of, of, of looking at how we respond to emergencies in our city, looking at how we, um, provide social emergency services and so forth, uh, is something that this council's already taken seriously. So I'm, I'm hopeful that, that people will, will gain some trust with the commission. I agree, I think it was Counselor Foster that said before, we, we, we're going to work to, to build some trust here. And, you know, lastly, I just want to say that, that I do support the commission as I, as I have since, since June 4th, when we talked about it, I think, the very first time, uh, in some of our comments. So, uh, thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay. Counselors, Counselor Jarrett?
Um, I just wanted to speak generally about, and thank you, Counselor Quinlan, um, for that analysis. So I have, and very much appreciated the work that the mayor and the Council President have done to incorporate our suggestions. I am going to support the resolution and the commission. I think because we have a strong mayor form of government, I don't think we're going to get much done in this area if we don't work together. However, historically, if we look at commissions like this in the past, there's not a good track record at making change. So we, we are going to need continued public support to ensure that we take action on the recommendations. And I think as Counselor Quinlan said, we are, um, you know, we as a council have shown that we are engaged and want, and want to look at the, at alternatives here. Um, I did want to bring up one issue which wasn't addressed, um, and that's the issue of stipends for service and how that would enable more people to have the resources to participate, um, in the conversation. And, um, I understand that this is a larger issue, uh, this is a larger conversation. It deserves its own select committee or commission to think about the issue of compensation for the, for primarily volunteer work that, uh, our boards and commissions are. In my work with the Housing Partnership, we explored the idea of civic participation grants, which would be partnering with a local nonprofit to give grants to those who would qualify. So I'm interested in exploring this as a shorter term solution, uh, where outside of the city, uh, someone who wanted support in participating in this commission could, could apply. So if anyone is interested in, uh, working with me on that, please, please contact me and, and the public or the council. And, um, I think that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that, that offer. Okay, oh, Counselor Mary, hold up.
Yes, unmuted, good. Um, yeah, I just wanted, um, to say that I am glad that we're voting on this. I think it's the right thing to do. Um, I respect the work the mayor and the Council President put into the forming the commission. And I understand this type of, you know, joint effort is unusual, so the process was bad and was fast as well. So things weren't necessarily clear. I, I do feel like after counselors spent like parts of two meetings thoughtfully amending the joint commission document with no knowledge of the future ability to vote on it, you know, it just doesn't sit right with me to, to vote on it with, with that, you know, what, what feels like a little bit after the fact. Um, and so for this vote, I will be respectfully abstaining. But I am heartened by all the watchful eyes on the commission and amazing brain trust in this community to draw from. I appreciate Counselor Quinlan's comments about accountability. And I thank the mayor and President Shara for the, being responsive to our suggestions and amendments to the, the joint commission document. I, um, I'm, I'm at this point quite hopeful about what we can accomplish here because I think there's a lot of motivation and I think it's exciting. And I am committed, uh, to supporting and helping the commission to succeed, whether in a formal or informal role. Thank you.
Any other comments? Oh, Counselor Labarge?
Thank you. I'll say it again, as a city counselor, I am very pleased in the direction we are putting in place a Northampton Leasing Review Committee. We are definitely going in the right direction with both branches of our government, working together, hearing the many voices in our city of change and our police department to study the complex issues that have been brought to our attention, which is very, very valuable here. We heard it, we've got this commission that we're going to be supporting. And I really feel that people will be able to work together. And our city, our city will be able to work together with this new commission coming in place. And many people are very interested in being part of this commission to help make our city what it is, what it is, and to be vibrant, safe, and even visitors coming into our city. So I know it's going to be a lot of hard work, but I know it can be done. And we do have the many residents in our city who are very, very happy that this is being in place. And I support this 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nash?
All right, unmuted, okay. So, um, I'd, I'd like to thank both the mayor and Counselor Shara for pulling this together. Uh, this, this is really terrific work on short notice. It, um, and I, I remain very hopeful about the work that this commission can produce. I am looking forward to the results. I, I, I appreciate that the timelines set in place are matching up with our budget process, with our budget planning process, that we are clearly going to move on things here. And, um, and so I, I'm hopeful and I want to thank the Council President and the mayor for pulling this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no further hands, Mayor Narkowitz, anything you'd like to add?
No.
Okay. Um, Laura, roll call, please.
Counselor Dwight?
Nope, sorry, wait, hold on, okay.
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori? Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes. Move to suspend rules, please, to allow for a second reading.
Second.
This has been made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Foster, suspend rules. Any discussion on suspension of rules? Hearing none, roll call on suspension of rules, please.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
None.
Oops.
You're muted.
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second reading's been, motion for second reading's been made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Dwight. Any discussion on second reading? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Stay.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
And Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Okay, that passes into readings. Um, moving next, we go to the consent agenda. I will read the titles of the items and then I'm going to ask if there are any removals for discussion as there's no discussion on items on the consent agenda. So first, we have the minutes of June 3rd, 2020 for the budget hearing and June 25th, 2020 for the special meeting. Next item is 20.084, applications for junk dealer licenses. There's a, these are renewal licenses for Richard and Sharon Huntley, 254 East Hampton Road. The petitioner is Richard Huntley. And for Norman E. Maynard, 25 Garfield Avenue, petitioner is Norman E. Maynard. Next is 20.085 petitions for second hand, second, annual second hand dealer licenses. These are renewal licenses for Antiques Corner at 81 Loudville Road. The petitioner is Louis M. Farick. Cancer Connection Thrift Shop at 375 South Street. There is Christine Quinn. The Family Jewels at 56 Green Street, petitioner is Richard J. Stone. Norman E. Maynard, 25 Garfield Avenue, petitioner is Norman E. Maynard. Sassy Pants Vintage and Used Clothing at 2 Con Street, Unit 2, petitioner is Kathleen, uh, Mona Longowski. In Urban Exchange, 233 Main Street, petitioner is Sylvia Naumburger. Next is 20.086, an application for business owner's permit, Jeffrey D. Miller for Cosmic Cab Company. And next, these are 20.097 appointments to various committees. These are all reappointments to the Board of Registars, Daniel Polczek, 335 South Street, uh, term April 2020 to March 2023. Downtown, Downtown Business Architecture Committee, Alan Tierney, 30 Francis Street. Term is July 2020 to June 2023. To the Human Rights Commission, Booker Bush, M.D., 119 Pine Street, Florence. Term is July 2020 to June 2023. License Commission, Helen Kahn, 188 Federal Street in Florence. Term is July 2020 to June 2026. To the Parks and Recreation Commission, James Ryan, 56 Leonard Street in Leeds. Term is July 2020 to June 2023. Those are the items.
Move, move approve. And I also want to commend Laura for her heroics on, uh, generating the minutes of those meetings. Absolutely astonishing, but yes.
For real.
Lot of work.
Thank you. Also worth noting is that those appointments to various committees are actually for referral to city services. That's what we're actually moving.
Right.
Yes.
You didn't mention that it was for referrals, so.
I know, it didn't, it's not, it doesn't say it on here, but that is, those are for referral for city services. Um, those are all reappointments, but they're still, they get referred to city services. Um, so there are no removals, right? So the motion's been made and seconded. Um, Laura, when you're ready, please roll call.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Hold on, wait, different mouse.
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Wait, oh, you're not muted, but I can't hear you. No. No.
He's mouthing that.
Nothing but us.
Yeah, it's him messing with me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you are messing with me? Or yes, you approved the consent agenda? Okay.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Okay, next, hold on, scrolling, scrolling. Okay, next, we are going to recess for the finance committee. And, oh, I gotta scroll all the way to the top of this agenda, okay. Um, Laura, when you're ready, can you please call the role of finance, please?
Sure. Counselor Shara?
Yes, here.
Counselor Labarge?
Here.
Counselor Quinlan?
Here.
And Counselor Thorpe?
Here.
Okay. First item is more minutes. Um, this is approval of minutes from the previous meeting, which was June 18th. So is there a motion on approving these minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Labarge and seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Um, any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Um, our first financial order is 20.083, in order to approve issuance of refunding bonds. And this is in the city council, July 9th, 2020, upon the recommendation of the mayor, 20.083, in order to approve issuance of refunding bonds, ordered that in order to reduce interest costs, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to provide for the sale and issuance of refunding bonds pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority at one time or from time to time to refund all or any portion of the city's general obligation bonds outstanding as the date of adoption of this order, and that the proceeds of the refunding bonds issued pursuant to this order shall be used to pay the principal redemption premium and interest on the bonds of the city to be refunded and cost of issuance of the refunding bonds, and that any premium received by the city upon the sale of any refunding bonds approved by this order unless any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this order in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws. And, okay, is there, can I get a motion?
Make a motion?
Motion second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Thorpe, and I see the mayor here. You see the unmute thing?
Yes, thank you, um, thank you, Council President and to the members of the finance committee. This is a language that's been prepared by our bond council. We, obviously, you know that we, um, we, uh, issue municipal bonds to pay for, um, debt on capital projects and other expenditures. And, um, we have a potential opportunity to essentially refinance, um, some of that debt. We lasted this in 2015, uh, when we had the opportunity, uh, we had some bonds that were coming up and were eligible, uh, to, um, for this refunding process. Um, and at that point, we were able to save significantly on, um, on interest rates by refunding them. It's very similar to someone who might refinance their, their home, their mortgage, in order to take advantage of a lower rate. Obviously, we have a lower rate environment right now, um, and bond council, um, has advised that we should prepare ourselves, um, to be ready in September, uh, early September, that if those rates remain favorable, uh, that we would, um, we would go through that process. So essentially, this is language that just, um, authorizes the city to do that. We, we actually took a vote like this back in 2015, um, but some, some language and some laws have changed since then. So out of an abundance of caution, we wanted to bring the vote back forward again. And we're asking for two readings because again, we want our bond council to be able to prepare and lay the groundwork. Um, and you'll, your next meeting isn't until late August, and so we wanted to get two readings on this tonight. We believe, and again, these are just estimates, that, um, that the bonds that would become eligible, um, in the fall for this refunding, um, that we could potentially, you know, be able to save about $230,000 in interest payments over like a nine-year period. Um, again, those are just estimates from our bond council. We, you know, won't know until we know what the actual interest rate is at the time. So that's what this is for, um, and, uh, and I would appreciate, uh, the, the positive recommendation of the finance committee and hopefully the city council.
Okay, thank you. Counselors? Counselors. Councilor Thorpe and then Councilor Quinlan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for being here. Is this happening now because there's a decline in interest rates?
Yes, definitely. You know, we're, we're seeing that interest rates are low right now. I know lots of people are refinancing mortgages, and so, so it's, it's definitely a combination of that environment. Obviously, we don't know what, if that environment will continue and what it will be looking like in September, but we want to be prepared in case, in case it does happen, yeah.
Thank you. And with refunding bonds, it's somewhat accurate that a bond that retires another bond before the first bond retire, matures, is that correct?
I missed the last part of your question.
With refunding bonds, it's a bond that retires another bond before the first bond matures?
Yes, I believe that's probably an accurate description, yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
There's, every bond has like a callable period when, and so when that period comes around, that's the opportunity that you have to be able to seek this refunding bond, yeah.
Thank you.
It was Councilor Quinlan.
Yeah, I just, I just had a question about the, the order itself, because I note here that it says at one time or from time to time. So I'm wondering, does this have a shelf life, this specific order? Is this something that the City Council and the Finance Committee vote on every year? Or is this something that would just, that we vote on tonight and it's, it's in place somewhat permanently?
Well, what I, as I said before, it, it, it had last been voted on, or some language similar to this, in 2015. But some of those mass general laws have changed since then, and there've been some Modernization Act related to how bonds are calculated. And so our Bond Council, out of an abundance of caution, thought we should come back and have this language. But again, I guess I would just stress that, you know, I don't, this would, I don't know that any, any mayor would, would refinance unless there was going to be a savings to the city. So I don't know that there's a great financial risk here. I can't imagine a mayor, future mayor refinancing to get a higher interest rate. So, so again, we, we rely on professional counsel from our Bond Council who, you know, follow the bond market very carefully and follow interest rates, and, and they, they are always looking at for these types of opportunities. So, so yeah, I think this would, until there, unless and until there was some other change or, you know, that it would probably allow us to do that going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, roll call, please, Laura.
Councilor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councilor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councilor, Councilor Shara.
Yes.
And Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with a positive recommendation. Next, next is 20.087, which is, and, whoops, it opened over there for some reason, hold on one sec. It is an order to, it's in the City Council, July 9th, 2020, upon the recommendation of the mayor, Planning Sustainability and Planning Board, in order to approve spending to complete the Northview subdivision. Whereas, the planning board has ordered the calling of the Financial Performance Guarantee Lenders Agreement on the Northview subdivision at Village Hill because of the failure of the developer-owner to complete the subdivision in accordance with the subdivision plans. And whereas the planning board also holds the covenants on two lots as an additional performance guarantee. And whereas Northview subdivision needs additional grading, site stabilization, drainage, sidewalk, asphalt, and related work to complete the project. And whereas the city will only fund improvements to the extent those improvements are funded from the Financial Performance Guarantees and the release of covenants. Order that Northampton City Council, in accordance with the Subdivision Control Law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41U, Section 81U, and the Northampton subdivision regulations, authorizes the expenditure of performance guarantee funds to meet the costs and expenses of the city in completing the work as specified in the approved plan and to refund remaining funds, if any. Okay.
Move to, move with a positive recommendation.
The motion's been made by Councilor Quinlan, seconded by Councilor LaBarge. I see.
I can speak to it, and I, I'm not sure if Director Fiden's here, he may be able to add to that. You actually heard some, from someone in public comment who actually made reference to this issue in this project. And, and again, this is a performance bond on the public utilities that were part of this subdivision requirement. We, so, but if Mr. Fiden's here, he, he has much greater detailed knowledge of this, and I would defer to him to give you a more expanded explanation.
Mr. Fiden.
Sure, I think you've gotten most of the points. I mean, this, this was a failed subdivision. This doesn't happen often, but it certainly happens from time to time. The developer failed. Developers left holding five lots. And Florence Bank holds a mortgage on them. I assume Florence is going to foreclose, but I don't really know that for sure. There are, you know, several different permits, the Site Plan Approval, the Stormwater Permit, and there's a subdivision permit. The performance guarantee we hold just has to do with the stormwater permit. And so the reason we're asking for two readings is, the site was stable, but now literally every time it rains, there's more and more damage happening to the site. So we'd like to move as quickly as possible to stabilize the site, because it does become more expensive over time as, as the erosion's actually causing problems. And so it's a state law creates pretty strict rules for this process. So there's a requirement, we had to release certain funds at certain points in the project, so we hold as much money as we possibly can. What we do that's over and above what almost every other city does is, in addition to the performance guarantee, the financial performance guarantee, we also hold covenants on two lots. So that puts us in a much better position than most communities are. Most communities, when a subdivision fails, they hold a certain amount of money back. But in addition, you know, even though we don't own those two lots and can't do anything with it, the developer's pretty, the owner's pretty motivated to work with us. We hope there's enough money to do everything in the project, but we don't know that, it's too early in the process. What absolutely has to be done is the stormwater, as I said, to stabilize the site, and things we're getting.
I see Councilor LaBarge and Councilor Foster.
Wayne, when I had called you today, because I was looking at this very, very carefully, and if I can recall, about 15 years ago, possibly 14 or 15 years ago, we had something similar like this. And I think Councilor Dwight, if you can recall, Ava Circle. We had serious problems there, and Wayne, you were involved with neighborhood meetings with us, and also at that point with the Director of the Department of Public Works. And looking at the contractor himself, who was the builder and so forth, the properties of the surveying was not completed, and also on the boundary lines. And then when I looked at this, and I said, are we running into the same problem? But I remember when I went into the planning board as a city councilor for all the residents on Ava Circle, because I knew that the contractor or the builder had to place money in the planning board. That is a procedure you do, correct? They have to deposit?
Yeah, either an escrow or a letter of credit or third-party agreement, but in some form or other, correct?
And I had asked the planning board to not release that letter of credit until all that surveying work was completed there and the boundaries were put in place, and you were there in full support of it also. And I can see what's happening here, you know, and hearing that resident tonight speaking, it's almost, but it's a little bit worse there than it was here. And I'm, I'm going to support this 100% because they're going to need all the help they can get.
Thank you, yeah, I mean, I, I've worked through three recessions in my time in Northampton, and every recession, we've had some failures. I have to say, we're in a much better position now than we were two recessions ago, because we had a lot of bank failures. And so we had projects potentially could have lost both the bank and the developer. In this case, even the developer failed, the performance guarantee is solid, there's no risk of losing that.
Thank you, Wayne.
Sir Foster.
I thank you. So this is in Word 2, and I had a chance to meet with the residents of Northview. They spent about an hour with me on Tuesday night, showing me around, and Director Fiden, I understand you had a chance Sunday morning. You really took a look around, and I have some questions. So of course, I will support this, but I just wanted to kind of move a few things forward. The, the letter that was read during public comment, that was actually signed by 22 residents from Northview. They have been working really hard, both to mitigate stormwater runoff on their own, as well as to, to pull together, you know, as a group to, you know, to find solutions. And so, some questions I have for you. With, with mass development and the city, you know, kind of helping to move this process forward, I understand that the homeowners will have a homeowners association, or that was the plan when all the lots were sold. But now that all the lots aren't sold, the homeowners association consists of the developer who is no longer working on this project and is, and is filed for the, the state-level equivalent of bankruptcy. So what recourse do the homeowners have to sort of move forward with forming that association? Is there any recourse?
So that's actually a private contractual agreement that the city is not a party to. So, because we, we have nothing to do with the rules and when the homeowners don't form. There are five lots that are still owned by Sturbridge Development, and they are, Florence Bank has mortgages on all of them. And there's a lot of value in those lots. So at some point, I mean, so I guess there's two models. One is the developer can release those lots and say, yes, we're, I turn this over, you guys can form the homeowners association now, that they have the right to change that. Or at some point, those lots can go forward and, and be developed and be sold, and then, then there's an existing threshold that turns control of the homeowners association to the current property owners.
Okay, and with the city holding covenants on those lots, does that mean the city could potentially bring in more income to help fund the improvements that are needed in that area?
Yeah, so there are, there's, there's five permits on the property. They all have some thresholds in terms of when the city releases them. So, so the city has some leverage there. Everybody who needs civic occupancy, and there's still five lots that need, we need, you know, the homes haven't been completed yet. And so they're going to need civic occupancy. The city has covenants on two lots, so we're going to have to release those lots at some point. There's stormwater permits, so there's a lot of frankly, leverage points in the process going forward. We are limited by state laws to what we can do, but we're going to look at all the leverage coming's going forward in the process.
Okay, because I really get the concern that the lack of improvements on the private lots are contributing to the, the difficulty with the stormwater runoff, that, you know, that, that so much of the sediment and silt and things like that that are running and clogging up the system are actually coming from private lots. And this, and if, if I understood you from our phone call the other day, the city doesn't have the ability to work on the city lots? Or it, or can the city have recourse there to, to shore up those private lots that are now sitting empty and contributing to this problem?
So it's two issues.
Okay.
First one is, at this point, we have no right to go onto the property, privately-owned property. The owners may well beg us to go on the property, because, you know, their, their value, the value of their lots are going down every day. So they may be happy to grant. The second thing is, I guess maybe it's three things. The second thing is, the monies we have are specifically about guaranteeing subdivision, not about guaranteeing compliance with stormwater regulations or compliance with site plan approval standards. And so we have to be careful in terms of how we use the money that we're holding in trust for the, for the property owners to ensure the work gets done. And the third, of course, is, this is the leverage point issue. If we use our limited funds, we may be leaving other money on the table. So the owner of those lots or the mortgage holder, if the mortgage is foreclosed on, we would like them to invest in stabilizing their lots. If we start spending, you know, so we're getting immediately a $280,000 payment. That's what the, the performance guarantee was for, the financial performance guarantee. If we start using those funds to stabilize lots, which absolutely need it, no question about that, then we're going to have less money to do the other things that are needed. So that's sort of the assessment that we do. We're obviously working with, with our legal counsel, you know, if there's a way to set, spend the funds to stabilize the property and put a lien to recover the funds for, you know, sidewalks, for example, are not a top priority, but they should get done at some point. So, so I think we're looking at all those things, but we are not going to, we're not just going to spend money and then not have, and let it, it property or off.
And then what role does, does mass, is mass development totally out of the picture with this now? Or, or is there some leverage with mass development to help this as well?
Yeah, as far as I know, they're out of, out of, out of it, there's a new, the, the woman we've been working for many years, the project manager, she retired recently. We met with the new project manager just on Friday, and she was going to do research on that, so I don't know. Neighbors have told me that mass development has a recapture agreement, they can take over lots if it fails, but again, we're not party to that. So we don't hold any performance guarantee with them. There is some erosion coming off the north-easterly corner, one of the places where there's a large beech tree, and that's on property that mass development still owns. That's a pretty, it's a very small contributing factor, but that's clearly going to be their responsibility for doing it. But other than that, as far as I know, they're off the hook, but again, we haven't done that sort of legal review yet.
Okay, and then, so just to be clear, so the priorities that you're identifying are the, the stormwater, the shoring up, and, and addressing that first with, with the $280,000 that's available. And then do you anticipate there will be money left over? Or I, I know that's hard to pin down without getting quotes, or do you, do you anticipate that that's?
But I can say, a year ago, the developer, when, you know, the developer was doing fine, and their engineer presented cost estimates to the city of the cost for finishing the project, and DPW reviewed those and thought those were realistic, and that's the $280,000. So a year ago, we thought there was enough money. Some prices go up over time, some prices go down over time. One of the real wild unknowns is what's happened underground. There is a large drainage facility underground, it's protected by a silt sock. If silt has made it through that silt sock and is damaging the facility and has to be dug up, then you can start spending money quickly. If the project is the normal course of things, you build things, and it becomes less expensive, then there should be enough money to do so, that, that's really the wild card.
Okay, so I guess that, just what I would advocate with this is that the residents who live there are going to be the ones eventually legally responsible for, for all of this. And I, I just want to advocate that their voices are part of this planning and moving forward with it. You know, we can talk offline out of this meeting to schedule a time, you know, to meet with them and make sure that, that they're involved with how it is moving forward, just recognizing that they're the ones who are legally and financially responsible for this when it's done. I, I just really want to make sure that they're included in this process.
Yeah, so it's clear, that, that's been very important to us. As, as you mentioned, I walked the site on Sunday with neighbors. We had a hour conversation yesterday with neighbors. We are interviewing an engineer for, for hiring on, I think tomorrow, actually, and we've invited three neighbors to come just for the beginning of the meeting to sort of give their view to the engineer. So very much neighbors are going to be at the table, because they have their own obligation already under permits beyond the storm, beyond the subdivision permit. They're not going to be making the final decision, because we can't release that, but absolutely, neighbors need to be at the table at every step of the way.
Thank you, Director Fiden.
There? Questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, roll call and a positive recommendation, please.
Councilor Shara.
Yeah.
Councilor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
And Councilor Quinlan.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with a positive recommendation. Next is 20.088. In order to authorize payment of prior year bills, upon the recommendation of the mayor, order that the council authorize payment of the following prior year bills totaling eight, I assume that should be a, no, $872.18. So Central Services to Hodge City Plumbing for FY19, $220.86. Central Services, Hodge City Plumbing, FY18, $206. Central Services, Hodge City Plumbing, FY18, $411.86. Central Services, WB Mason, FY19, $23.65. Central Services, WB Mason, FY16, $9.81. Central Services, WB Mason FY16, $9.81.
Move to approve, please.
Motion's been made and seconded by Councillor Quinlan and Councillor Labarge on a positive recommendation. Mayor Nerkwitz.
Thank you. So these are some small bills that are from a previous fiscal year and be under mass general law. Even a bill that is from June requires vote of the council to authorize a payment. And so these are a set of five different bills from FY, well, a series of FY fiscal years totaling $872 for services that have been rendered. And so we want to obviously pay them. And, and so we just need the authorization to do that because they're in a prior fiscal year.
Okay, any questions or comments? Oh, Councillor Jarrett.
Yeah, usually we see these as, you know, something that happened in this, the previous fiscal year. I'm just curious why there's some that are, you know, it's like maybe five years old here.
I share your curiosity. It's a little, I believe that, you know, occasionally, you know, some of these are vendors that we work with all the time. Like WB Mason is one that we get a lot of our bulk paper purchases from, as well as some, Hodge City Plumbing is someone that we've done work with. So these, sometimes occasionally bills get sent to wrong addresses or bills get rerouted to the wrong city department. And sometimes neither the vendor or the city catches it. And so I don't know the individual stories for each one, but I'm assuming one of us discovered that it had gone unpaid. And so we want to just make sure that we, they probably want to make sure their books are closed and cleared, and we want to do the same. So that's, again, unfortunate, but fortunately, like the oldest one is for $9.81. So I think we're good for it at this point. So we want to make sure we close that, they want to close it off, their books, and we want to close it off ours.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please, Laura.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Labarge.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
And Councillor Shara.
Yes. Next is 20.089. Upon the recommendation of the mayor, in order to authorize FY 2021 intermunicipal agreements, ordered that whereas mass general law, chapter forty, section four A allows for joint operation of public activities among governmental units, and whereas national law, chapter forty, section four A requires that such intergovernmental agreements be approved in a city by the city council and the mayor, and whereas the city of Northampton provides services to and shares services with other municipalities. Therefore pursuant to national law, chapter forty S, four A, the city council hereby authorizes the city of Northampton to enter into the following intermunicipal agreements for FY 2020. All agreements for one year unless specifically noted. Contract with town of Williamsburg for building inspection and zoning enforcement services. Agreement to provide the town of Williamsburg with services for a lump sum annual fee. Contract with town of Williamsburg for electrical inspection services. Agreement to provide the town of Williamsburg with services with permit fees turned over to the city of Northampton. Contract towns of Amherst, Hadley, and East Hampton for municipal hearing officer services. Agreement to provide municipal hearing officer services pursuant to master law, chapter 148A, section 2C, to hear complaints related to alleged violations of state building codes or the state fire codes for a lump sum per the agreement. Contract with the towns of Amherst, Chester, Chesterfield, Covington, Hadley, Middlefield, Pelham, Williamsburg, Goshen, and Worthington to provide veteran services, other officer services. Agreement to provide these services to other various communities with assessments to individual towns per the agreement. Contract with the towns of Granby, Hadley, Amherst, South Hadley, and East Hampton to provide seal every weight and measure services. Agreement to provide these services to various communities and assessments to individual towns per the agreement. Contract with the Franklin County Regional Council of Governments to monitor and support the greater Franklin County economic target area. Contract with the Franklin Regional Council of Governments to partner with the city of Northampton through its health department relative to the following contracts. One, to provide services relative to the Hampshire Medical Reserve Corps. And two, to provide emergency management services for the Hampshire Public Health Emergency Preparedness Coalition. Contract with Amherst, South Hadley, Pelham, Ware, Beltertown, and East Hampton. Agreement to jointly create a coalition called the Hampshire Opioid Abuse Prevention Collaborative. Charged with mobilizing local boards of health, medical providers, educational facilities, social services agencies, community organizers, and others in Hampshire County to create sustainable policies, programs, and practices to change community ideas and expectations regarding opioid use and abuse, as well as to reduce the morbidity and mortality rates that result from opioid use and abuse. Pioneer Valley Opioid Data Collaborative. Contract with Bay State Health, Inc., City of Springfield Department of Health and Human Services, Hampton County DA, Northwestern DA, Hampton County Sheriff's Department, Opioid Task Force, Berkshire Opioid Abuse Prevention Collaborative, North Quabbin Community Coalition Partners for a Healthier Community, Inc. Agreement to work cooperatively to create methods to collect, store, and aggregate data regarding opioid use and abuse in the region with the goal of analyzing trends and identifying short and long-term intervention strategies. Contract with Pioneer Valley Mosquito Control District, working under the oversight of Massachusetts Department of Agriculture, focused on mosquito surveillance and control. The city, through its health department, participates in this regional effort to assist Western Massachusetts communities with mosquito-related health concerns. Contract with the towns of Amherst and Pelham to seek and accept grants where possible and to otherwise explore the mutual advantages of electricity, community aggregation. DART Case Management Database. A memorandum of understanding, MOU, between the police departments, healthcare, behavioral health, and recovery centers, allowing the first responders to respond to an overdose, communicate to the outreach teams in the municipality which the persons reside, thereby triggering a DART outreach. Partners, Hampshire County Police Departments, Amherst, Beltertown, Chesterfield, East Hampton, Goshen, Granby, Hadley, Hatfield, Northampton, Plainfield, South Hadley, Southampton, Ware, Williamsburg, Amherst College, Massachusetts State Police, Hampton County Police Departments, Chickaby, East Long Meadow, Ludlow, Palmer, Long Meadow, West Springfield, Westfield, Wilberham, Behavioral Health Network, CSO, Gandara, North Hampton Recovery Center, Western Ma, Western MA Training Consortium, Ware Recovery Center, the Nest Recovery Center, Cleveland Dickinson Hospital, Bay State Health Systems, Holyoke Medical Center, Mercy Trinity Health Systems, Hampshire County Jail, and House of Corrections. Health Information Exchange for the enhancement of the regional capacity for timely and comprehensive data collection to improve data efficiencies, cost-saving, and improved service delivery for, by expanding our regional public health data capabilities. Partners, Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, Franklin Regional Council of Governments, Opioid Task Force, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, Hampshire County Police Departments, Amherst, Beltertown, Chesterfield, East Hampton, Goshen, Granby, Hadley, Hatfield, Northampton, Plainfield, South Hadley, Southampton, Ware, Williamsburg, Amherst College, MAC Police, Hampton County Police Departments, Chickaby, East Long Meadow, Ludlow, Palmer, Long Meadow, West Springfield, Westfield, Wilberham, Behavioral Health Network, CSO, Gandara, North Hampton Recovery Center, Western Mass Training Consortium, Ware Recovery Center, the Nest Recovery Center, Cleveland Dickinson Hospital, Bay State Health System, Holyoke Medical Center, Mercy Trinity Health Systems, Hampshire County Jail, and House Corrections, Northwest District Attorney, Massachusetts Ambulance Trip Data Matrix, Department of Public Health, Mass Registry of Vital Records, Death Certificate Data, PDMP slash Mass PAT, BAT, Maven, and other mass chip data and other relevant behavioral health and substance use-related data. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Agreement to provide the planning sustainability department of the following, planning technical assistance, traffic and transportation analysis, historic preservation, planning, and housing rehabilitation services through FY 2023. The, hold up. The following agreements currently authorized by the city and have not expired. Excuse me. Contract with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for EPA Stormwater MS4 Permit Assistance through March of 2022. Paramedic Intercept Agreement with Municipal Towns and Ambulance District through November 2041. Contract with Pioneer Valley Transit Authority for Senior Transportation Services through November of 2041. Contract with Greenfield Community College to use one strand of our five college fiber network for an annual fee per the agreement through FY 2022. Contract with the towns of Williamsburg, Goshen, Southampton, Chesterfield, Huntington, Hadley, and West Hampton. Agreement to provide laser fiche hosting services for an annual fee through FY 2022. Contract with Pioneer Valley Bike Share and to enter into agreement with the cities of West Springfield and Chickaby and the town of Hadley, participate in the Pioneer Valley Bike Share program along with the following entities, which are already part of the existing intermunicipal agreement for the program, Holyoke, Springfield, Amherst, South Hadley, UMass, PVPC, and East Hampton, already approved through FY 2021. Contract to participate in the Connecticut River Task Force with the police departments of East Hampton, Hadley, South Hadley, Chickaby, Northwestern District Attorney in partnership with Massachusetts Environmental Police to enhance law enforcement efforts on the Connecticut River due to the heavy volume of voting activity within the regional boundaries of the adjacent agencies, three-year contract agreement to May of 2022. Agreement for Fiber Optic Cable with Five College Net LLC. Agreement to allow the city use of four strands of the cable network, including the right to transport and distribute digital signals for data. Renewal of agreement for five years from F, from 2019 to 2024, and allowing for automatic renewal for another five years from 2024 to 2028. Agreement to participate in the Domestic Violence Intervention Project, a regional partnership formed between the Northwestern District Attorney's Office, Safe Passage, the New England Learning Center for Women in Transition, and Area Police Departments, four-year agreement to December of 2022. Agreement to participate in the Northwestern District Anti-Crime Task Force with all communities and the representative law enforcement entities within the jurisdiction of the Northwestern District, which are within the jurisdiction of the Northwestern District Courts and that of the Northwestern District Attorney's Office, multi-year agreement with no end date. Contract with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and multiple towns for the Mass in Motion Program. Renew for three more years through FY 2022. Public Health Nursing Program, contract to partner with the fine communities to provide assistance for the infectious disease surveillance reporting to the Massachusetts Virtual Epidemiologic Network, Maven, for the COVID-19 crisis, Middlefield, Chesterfield, Huntington, Plainfield, Worthington, East Hampton, East Long Meadow, and the Foothills Health District serves the towns of Whately, West Hampton, Williamsburg, and Goshen for FY 2020 and FY 2021. Young Adult Empowerment Collaborative of Western Massachusetts Contract Department, the Franklin County Sheriff's Office, the Opioid Task Force of Franklin County, and the North Quabbin Region. Agreement to work cooperatively to develop and strengthen the regional data system, serving your adults, preventing and addressing young adult misuse by creating and promoting evidence-based programming to support young people as they transition into the five stages of adulthood and engaging families and communities in their roles to support young adults for FY 2021 and FY 20, FY 2020 and FY 2021. I think I should say young adults, not your adults. Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Feel like I'm having an out-of-body experience. Okay, Mayor Nerkwitz.
Yes, this is an annual, an annual exercise that we do to basically renew the, many of them existing intermunicipal agreements that we have with other communities or sets of communities or in some cases, combination of communities and agencies throughout the region. The last part of the list that was read were are ones that are still in effect, so you're not actually reauthorizing them. But we like to just let people know which ones are already existing. And, and again, it's under mass general law, we have to reauthorize these every fiscal year. I do think it's a great example of the ways that Northampton does collaborate in the region. And in some cases, is a leader in the region. Many of these are things that we lead. Everything from, you know, Bike Share to the more recent COVID-19, public nursing initiative. And so, anyway, I would ask for your approval. We are seeking two readings on this, only because these are things that are in effect on July 1st. They are sometimes, sometimes don't come into us until late, very late or close to the end of the fiscal year. Because in some cases, some of our partners have to have these approved at town meeting. And so town meeting sometimes is late in the spring. So, so we're getting these approved and we would appreciate your support.
I think Councillor Mayory.
Yeah, I just have a question. I was just thinking about the commission and what what might come out of the commission. And is this kind of beholden us to, is there four-year contracts starting in 2020, 2022?
Um, these get renewed every year.
Okay.
Most cases.
Right, I just, I just see the DART and the DB Intervention Project. And I'm just thinking, you know, if the commission comes out with kind of alternative ways of going about those, approaching those issues in our community, I didn't know if this kind of, how much that we would be able to kind of modify this or if this is kind of locking us in for four years.
Yeah, no, most intermunicipal agreements that we sign have the ability for members with, obviously, notice to the fellow members to withdraw from. So that's always the case, you're not bound for a specific set of times. Sometimes the duration is by a grant. The, the, many of the opioid grants, I mean, many of the opioid-related ones are funded by either state or federal grants that are multi-year. So, no, I don't believe it, this, these will not irreparably lock us into anything if we decide to change. And we do, we have had member communities that pull out of, you know, pull out of these collaboratives, and they basically have to give us, you know, enough notice so that we can plan. Because often these cities and towns are sharing some of the fee structure, so we have to do enough notice for that. So, yeah, I don't think it does lock us in.
Mayor, do they ever modify it? I wasn't actually thinking about withdrawals, I was thinking about modifying.
Well, certainly, yeah, I mean, certainly, yeah, certainly, that's a possibility as well. And that's really something, you know, if it's something, if it's something we're leading, but if it's something that's collaborative, then it's a sort of a collaborative decision, but yeah, certainly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other questions or comments? Oh, Councillor Jarrett.
Definitely see some great collaborations here. And as Councillor Mayory said, there's certainly many that would be appropriate for the policing review commission to review. I was curious on the fiber optic cable with five college net. How is that used? What is that?
So, yeah, so there's a, there's a fiber optic network that was basically created, a high-speed fiber optic network that was created by the five colleges. And as a, as part of that, the communities in which the five colleges are located have the ability to utilize some of those strands of fiber. And so we, Northampton, because we are, obviously, Smith College is in the five college network, we do have access to that fiber and we do utilize it. And it allows us to be able to utilize access to the data, the, one of the state's two data centers, which is in Springfield. So, yeah, we do utilize it as a way to have access to higher-speed fiber optic network. Yeah, so that's what that's in reference to.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please, Laura.
Councillor Labarge.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
And Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with the positive recommendation. Next is upon the recommendation, the mayor, 20, oh, sorry, this one. Next, the next one on the agenda has, there's been a request for its withdrawal. So, Mayor, I don't know if you want to speak to it at all, but it's been withdrawn.
Um, sure, I can, I, I can just, just give a brief description. This is a project that we've tried, attempted to do a couple of times. This is the Treasure Collector project, where we were going to try to make some construction-related modifications to it. We actually bid it out last year and, and the bids came in much higher than we had anticipated. We decided to rebid the project this summer because we've been getting some very favorable construction bids. And so the bids were open today. And, and we're still seeing that the project is, is much more in terms of what we are receiving in bids than we had anticipated. So we're going to take a look at ways to scale down the project, still achieve the goals of the project in terms of, you know, achieving, you know, both the public health safety, that's now sort of a new element with COVID-19, but the other elements of security and privacy that we were working on with this very busy municipal office. It's the, you know, other than the city clerk, it's the busiest office in terms of customers coming in for various services. So, so we're withdrawing it now and, and we'll take a look at, at ways to, to scale back the project to make it more cost-effective. I did also just want to point out, and this is actually a question that Councillor Jarrett had asked me, but somebody mentioned it as well in public comment. This is a project that we're proposing to fund from the stabilization fund, which is one of our two stabilization funds that we use for one-time, typically, one-time expenses or one-time, often sometimes capital expenses. It's not coming from the fiscal stability stabilization fund, which is a separate stabilization. stabilization fund, uh, that's dedicated, um, was created to help stabilize and fund operating expenses in the operating budget. So I know that there was some confusion about that, so I just wanted to also make that clarification. So I am, we are not reallocating, um, any of the funds from the, or I was not proposing to reallocate funds from the fiscal stability stabilization fund. Um, it's confusing because they're all called stabilization funds under Mass General Law. Um, one's fiscal stability, one's, uh, capital stabilization, and one is just a generic stabilization fund. So wanted to clear up that as well. So we are withdrawing.
Okay, thank you. So next we have upon the recommendation, the mayor 20.091, in order to accept gift of labor and materials to repair grave of George Hodestia. Whereas historic gravestone services of 113 Michael Lane, New Salem, Massachusetts wishes to provide labor and materials to repair the deteriorated gravestone, George Hodestia, formerly enslaved citizen of Florence and resident in Florence, enslaved citizen and Florence resident in Park Street Cemetery. Order that the North Hampton City Council gratefully accepts the donation of labor and materials valued at $500 as a gift to the city of North Hampton to be used for the restoration of the gravestone of George Hodestia in the Park Street Cemetery in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, Grants and Gifts Acceptance and Expenditure.
To approve.
Second.
Uh, the motion's been made by Counselor Labarge, and I think was counsel, was seconded by Counselor Quinlan. Okay. Um, Mayor Narcoets, will you tell us?
There's a couple of orders tonight that involve, uh, in some cases, a donation of, um, uh, money to, um, cemetery-related projects, and then in another case, um, donation of, um, uh, services. And, um, in one case, in one, an order that'll come up later, um, uh, the, um, David Ruggles Center is donating funds to help, um, do some preservation activities on some former slave gravestones in the Park Street Cemetery. Um, this, uh, donation actually represents sort of a pro bono gift of the preservationist who's actually doing the work on those other gravestones. And so he has offered, because he's going to be in Park Street Cemetery doing these other restoration, um, he's offered to basically do the, uh, the preservation of this particular, um, stone. Again, another, um, another Florence resident who was a free slave, a former slave. And, um, and so, um, so that's the, um, that's the, uh, what the gift represents. So it's the, uh, a company that does these gravestone services donating their services for this one particular gravestone. And because it's a gift of either materials or labor, um, we have to accept that as, um, needs, requires the city council to accept that gift of labor and materials.
Well, I'm certainly grateful for their gift. Uh, any questions or comments? Count, no, yes? Yes? No?
I was just gonna say, I, I just love learning about these little snippets of North Hampton history. I find it really fascinating. So, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions or comments, roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
That moves forward with the positive recommendation. Next is 20.092, upon the recommendation, the mayor, in order to accept gift of plaque for grave of Basil Dorsey. Whereas Basil C. Dorsey was born enslaved in 1811, took his freedom on the Underground Railroad in 1833, and lived in Florence, Massachusetts from 1844 until his death in 1872, when he was buried in the Park Street Cemetery in North Hampton. Order that the North Hampton City Council gratefully accepts the donation of a plaque to be placed at his grave valued at $1,000 and donated by Bambi Miller as a gift to the city of North Hampton in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, Grants and Gifts Acceptance and Expenditure.
To approve.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counsel Labarge and seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Mayor Narcoets?
Another generous donation from someone. Um, those of you who've ever gone on Steve Strimer's, um, tours of Florence will know Basil Dorsey and, um, and, uh, and so again, another, uh, former slave who lived in, in Florence. And so this is again, a, um, a memorial gift to erect a plaque and, um, to provide more information about, um, Basil Dorsey at his gravesite.
Um, do we know if Bambi Miller is a resident of North Hampton or from somewhere else?
Um, I, I don't believe she is. Um, she's a, I believe she's a, someone who's very involved in historic preservation in the area. I don't know for sure if she is. I know she, um, formerly was on the Charlemont Historical Commission. Um, I believe she may live in Charlemont, um, but, um, but it has an active interest in, um, in, in the work that Steve does in the Ruggles Center, and so wanted to be able to, um, make this gift.
We're very grateful for it. Any questions or comments? Okay, Laura, roll call please on this generous gift.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Move forward with the positive recommendation. Next is upon the recommendation of the mayor, 20.093, an, uh, an, uh, order, I assume to accept, um, $3,000 gift from Ruggles Center for Park Street Cemetery gravestone repairs. Whereas the David Ruggles Center, a project of the Committee of North Hampton, Inc., would like to provide funding for repair work, materials, and professional oversight for repairs for the deteriorated gravestones of Basil Dorsey, Laura Washington, Louisa Dorsey, Nancy Jones, and Charles and Gertrude Burley in the Park Street Cemetery. Order that the North Hampton City Council gratefully appropriates the donation of the $3,000 gift to the city of North Hampton be used towards the repair work materials and professional oversight for repairs for these five gravestones in the Park Street Cemetery in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, Grants and Gifts Acceptance and Expenditure.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor Labarge. Mayor Narcoets?
Again, this is part of this series of very generous donations, um, um, in relation to the Ruggles Center and, and, um, the great work they do to preserve the, uh, the history of Florence's very important role in the Underground Railroad and, and some of the folks who've lived in our community. And, and so, uh, this again is a gift. Um, you're basically giving us the, you're basically giving us the ability to appropriate the funds that have been given to us, um, for this purpose, which is obviously what the donors intend the money to be used for. So, um, we gratefully accept it and, um, and thank the Ruggles Center for, for the gift.
Heartfelt thanks to the Ruggles Center for this gift and, and the work that they do. Um, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
And Counselor Shara.
Yes. That moves forward, positive recommendation. Next is upon the recommendation of the mayor, 20.094, in order to accept gift of 100, up to $100,000 to replace fencing at Bridge Street Cemetery. Whereas in 2016, a preservation master plan was created for the Bridge Street Cemetery, and a recommendation within this plan was phased replacement of a cemetery border fence as described on pages 25 to 27. An anonymous donor wishes to provide necessary funding for phase one of this fence replacement above and beyond the city's appropriation of $25,000 for cemetery improvements in FY 2021. Order that the North Hampton City Council gratefully appropriates the donation of a gift to the city of North Hampton of funds up to $100,000 to be used towards a replacement of approximately 880 linear feet of fence at the Bridge Street Cemetery to include two gates in accordance with the recommendation within the preservation master plan for Bridge Street Cemetery with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, Grants and Gifts Acceptance and Expenditure. Okay. Mayor Narcoets, anything you want to add on this?
So we're moving from Park Street Cemetery to, um, to Bridge Street Cemetery. And back in 2016, we did a preservation master plan. Um, and we've actually completed preservation master plans for, um, all three of our historic cemeteries, um, which has helped guide some of the, uh, both funding, uh, decisions that we've made in our capital program, um, as well as, um, uh, allowed us to, um, secure grants, uh, from, uh, Mass Historic and, and the Community Preservation, uh, Commission or Community Preservation Act monies, um, to do a series of, um, restoration efforts at, at our three historic cemeteries, Park and Bridge Street and, and West Farms. And so this is actually one of the recommendations out of the study. I don't know if you've, um, ever paid attention to the, uh, fence when you drive by the Bridge Street Cemetery. Um, it's a pretty, um, uh, it's a, it's a basically a chain link fence. It's clearly not the original fence, um, and it's, uh, uh, you know, needs a little bit of, uh, work, and it's obviously not very, um, very pretty to look at when you're driving down, uh, Bridge Street. Um, so one of the, one of the recommendations, um, in addition to the, you know, historic restoration of gravestones, et cetera, was to look at, um, restoring, uh, the fence, or at least installing a replica of what a, what a fence that would be more appropriate for that. So, um, so we have, have some, um, funds in our capital improvement, uh, program appropriation. Um, and we have a generous anonymous donor, um, in the community who stepped forward, um, and essentially said that they will leverage that $25,000 with up to $100,000, um, to help fund this phase one of the fence replacement. And, you know, the fence goes all the way around, uh, Bridge Street Cemetery. Um, this would just be the, the section, um, from sort of Orchard Street and Upbridge Street and then, and then down toward, um, toward, uh, the, uh, the side that, that borders Lampren Park, and there's some gates in there as well. So, um, very generous of this person, um, who, uh, wants to see this fence replaced. And so again, like the other gifts, we're asking for the authority, uh, to appropriate. It says up to 100,000 because we don't have, um, any exact, uh, price yet on it. Um, we really didn't want to move forward, and we typically don't move forward until we have the funding source secured. So, um, this is a, gives us authorization of up to $100,000.
Great. I want to personally thank this anonymous donor. Um, long before I was a counselor, this, um, the fence for, uh, around the Bridge Street Cemetery has been a sort of a dream project that I've always thought would just bring so much, um, if we could replace it with something that was more, more befitting such a historic cemetery and, um, closer to what the original would have been. It's such a remarkable cemetery and so beautiful, and that fence is not what should be there. So I, I'm personally thrilled. This is a project that I'm very excited about. Um, and I know Counselor Nash is as well, and his hand is up.
Yes. Well, thank you, Congressman. And you very much, very much what I want to say. Um, you know, I, I want to talk about how this is an example of lots of people pulling in the same direction. Uh, the mayor's been part of this. Uh, uh, Counselor Labarge has also been art, part of this as well. You'll notice that there was several orders here that had to do with historic, uh, preservation, that this discussion has been going on for a number of years. And by having these discussions and getting the plans together, that when the money becomes available, great things can happen as what is happening tonight. Um, people I want to thank are Jennifer Norman, Norman Lee, Bob Reckman, um, and, and Martha Lyon for all of their work on the, uh, the, the master plan for the cemetery. And I also want to thank the anonymous donor for being anonymous. It's, it's really kind of funny because, you know, it's, oh, you know, like, um, Carly Simons, you're so vain, you're always trying to figure out who that person is. Well, in this case, we're trying to figure out who this really great person is. And, and, and in my list of people who might be able to have the resources to do this and really are interested in this project, you know, I can name about 15 or 20 people in town who may, may very quietly be doing this. And that, um, and I think that's a great place to be coming from, that, you know, that we have a lot of neighbors who we feel would be stepping up to the plate. And that, you know, the last thing is, we have been stepping up to the plate. We've all been pulling in the same direction. And that this new fence at, at the, at the cemetery also is going to complement Bridge Street School. That this is part of a project that the Ward Three Association has been working on to improve not just the cemetery, but Lampren Park, the presentation of the school, and the approaches to the school, so that it's safer for families and children to walk in and get to the school. So, um, I'm really excited about this. The donor is the best. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Labarge. Thank you, everybody else.
I'll leave it at that.
Any other? Counselor Jarrett?
Um, yes, seems like a great project. I was curious, it talks about two gates. Will there be access through those gates? Cause I know one of the issues with Bridge Street Cemetery is there's only one place you can go in. So if you ever want to use it to, as a way, you know, a, a path for walking through, um, you can't. So is there any plan to change that?
Um, so the, um, the gates that are there, um, are, they're existing gates that are there right now. Um, so we're basically replacing those. Um, I know that some of the, um, one of the gates is not open all the time. Um, there's obviously, you know, there is some challenges here because one of our goals, one of our key missions, um, is providing perpetual care and rest to people that are buried in the cemetery. And so, um, we do have sometimes some competing interests of people that ostensibly want to walk through, but they, um, there's sometimes, um, dog waste and other kinds of things that happen as a result of that. But, uh, we are definitely looking at the, um, at the gates and access and trying to make sure that there's safe access in and out of the cemetery. Um, but these are gates that are existing now that we want to replace and upgrade, uh, to make them more historically appropriate. Um, and I know that part of the conversation that the Ward Three Neighborhood Association has been part of is that balance between wanting to invite the community into the cemetery, but also trying to be respectful of, um, of the purpose of the cemetery and the people that are buried there and the families that have, you know, interned their loved ones there.
Thank you.
Counselor Nash?
Oh, I'm unmuted. Yeah, and, uh, Counselor Jarrett, that is one of the, um, the goals of the, the, uh, of the neighbors and the Ward Three Association is to increase the access to this really beautiful piece of property. I, I strongly recommend to people go out there on a beautiful day. And I reme, I, I remember meeting, uh, with the mayor and director LaScalia about three, four years ago, out in the middle of the cemetery to discuss, you know, the, the, the preservation plan. And it, once you get into the middle of, of, of Bridge Street Cemetery, it's like the rest of the world goes away. It's, you, you're in this very, uh, rural country, uh, setting. It's, it's really quite remarkable. And so one of our goals is to work with the city to have better access. And, and also to protect the, the valuable monuments and, uh, be respectful, uh, as well. So.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes, um, thank you, Counselor Nash. Um, yes, we worked pretty hard on all the cemeteries together as a group. I want to also thank all the donors for such wonderful, wonderful, generous gifts and very, very fortunate at the Bridge Street Cemetery with somebody donating $100,000. That is so appreciative, and I really appreciate of that happening because it is needed. He changed, and I want to thank all the donors.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Narcoets?
Uh, no, no, I, um, yeah, uh, thank you. Um, just one more comment for Counselor Nash. Just one more comment for Counselor Nash really, and that's just that, you know, he may have missed the news that Carly Simon wrote it about Warren Beatty. So just anyway, that's breaking news for you.
You heard it here maybe first.
I'm not revealing anything new. It's about a year or so old, but yeah.
Any other comments, Pop Culture Cemetery, otherwise? Nope. Okay, seeing none, roll call please.
I thought I heard the motion from Counselor LaBarge. Was there a second?
No, there wasn't. I didn't hear anybody say second.
Okay.
Second?
I would second.
I think Counselor Quinlan seconded it.
Okay. Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with positive recommendation. Next up is upon the recommendation of the mayor, 20.095, an order for FY 2020 budget transfers, ordered that the following FY 2020 budgetary transfers be made. Okey dokey. From Legal Services, I'm just trying to figure out the best way to read it. Okay, from Legal Services, for Legal Services, $45,527. Transferring to, that's going there, General Liability Insurance for Public Employee Liability Insurance. It's, we're, we're transferring from there, $45,527 for parking maintenance, for equipment, $10,938 transferring to parking maintenance, repairs and maintenance, transferring from, $10,938. Planning, PS overtime, $6,062. Transferring to IT for overtime, no, for technology communication lines, $10,021. Transferring to IT permanent salaries, transferring from, $16,083. Other employee benefits, Medicare, transferring to, $21,300. Other employee benefits, sick leave buyback, transferring to, $28,502. Medical insurance, employee insurance benefits, transferring from, $49,802. Stormwater enterprise flood control salaries, permanent, transferring to, $13,254. Stormwater enterprise storm drains, security services, transferring from, $7,200. Storm drains, again, vehicle supplies, transferring from, $6,054. Sewer enterprise interest on debt, interest on long-term debt, transferring to, $1. And we're taking that dollar from storm drains for a total of, total budgetary transfers, transferring from and to, $135,605.
Move to approve, please.
Motion's been made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor Thorpe. And Mayor Nerkowitz?
Yes, so this is one of the reasons why we request that the city council hold this July meeting, typically the second week in July, is because the deadline for us to make any final transfer in the FY 2020 budget before we close it out is July 15th each year. And so typically as we get very close to the end of the year, I know earlier in the spring, we brought an order to make some initial transfers. And so this is our sort of final squaring up of various line items in the budget where we either, where we have some excesses or some overages and just making sure that we true up line items to make sure that they are in balance or not in deficit as we close out the FY 2020 budget. So you're not appropriating any new money, you're just allowing us to move money between OM and PS line items to make sure that we true it up for the FY 2020 budget, which officially ended June 30th, but we have this 15-day window to make these transfers.
Okay, any questions? Oh, Counselor LaBarge?
Mayor, could you explain the sick leave buyback?
When we have employees that, that retire or leave the service of the city, depending upon their time with the city or depending on their particular union contract, there's a, we essentially will pay them, pay them out sick leave that they have not used, basically, that's accumulated. And so, and this again is very much dependent on who retires and years that people retire or don't retire. It's capped at $5,000 and, and so it's, I'm sorry, $5,500. And so, again, there are some years when we have more retirements or more people leave and we have more payouts than what we've, what we've budgeted for. So that's what a sick leave buyback is.
Now, Mayor, state, I know I had a couple of residents on my ward who worked for the city and they became very ill and they were stricken with cancer and they used up all their sick time. Okay, when that happens, apparently other staff in the departments that they worked were, where they were very willing to help them, give them some of their sick time. Does that happen or what?
Yeah, there's, there's something that's called the sick bank or sick leave bank, which is again, part of, part of our collective bargaining agreements. And so members, employees can contribute to this sick leave bank and the bank is established and, and there's actually even a committee of employees that, that, when people petition to have access to sick leave bank, if, again, because their sick leave has been expended, that helps in that decision-making process. It's not really related to sick leave buyback, but there is, there is such a thing as a sick leave bank for employees that, again, have a, have a severe illness like the one you described and that allows for their colleagues to be able to extend additional sick leave to them.
Okay, so this here would not be the same thing as?
No, it's not. No, this is basically someone who's, you know, retiring and has a balance of sick leave left, which is basically paid time off and for, for, for sick, for sickness or illness. And so this basically allows, again, as we, over time, have capped it through our collective bargaining agreements, so up to $5,500. And again, it depends on how much they have accumulated. It may not always be $5,500. It may be less than that, but, but that's what a sick leave buyback is and we do budget for it. But again, there are some years where there may be more retirements or someone, so, so this is a case where we, we've come up short a little bit here, $28,000. So we need to move some money around to be able to cover that particular line item.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Jarrett?
So is this a case where this, these monies haven't yet been spent or have we already, you know, gone into a deficit for a particular account? Or is it, is it that once we approve this transfer, then you'll, then that money will be spent?
Um, so, you know, we have to pay these, you know, we have an obligation to pay these sick leave. So in probably, and I would say in the case of the sick leave buybacks, we probably already have done that. In some other cases where we have bills for things in some of the, like the technology communication lines or things like that, we, we, we haven't, but we're waiting for the funding to be there. So, and then there's other, like some other bills that we've encumbered, but we won't pay them until there's money in the particular account. So yes, it's incumbent on, we, most of these, we won't pay, we can't pay them until we have the amount of money that's needed to cover them in the account.
Yeah, I was just happened to be reading Section 77 of the Charter and it seems, you know, very clear, we can't spend it until, but yeah, I'm glad we're doing this process so we can spend the things we need to.
Exactly, yeah. And a similar process happens in the school department every year as well. The school committee, the superintendent and the finance director for the schools comes to the school committee and the school committee has to vote to, to move money, again, at the end of the year, to basically true up accounts and, and so, and it's happening in cities and towns all around the Commonwealth as well.
Hey, any other comments? Seeing none, roll call please.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
And Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with the positive recommendation. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move, second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Barge, seconded by Counselor Quinlan. Roll call please on adjourning.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
And Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Okay, we've adjourned out of finance and we go back into the council meeting where we start with these councils, with these financial orders again. So 20.083, in order to approve issuance of refunding bonds. This is the first reading, but two readings have been respectfully requested.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made by Counselor LaBarge?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Dwight. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Hold up.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Move to suspend, second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Barge, seconded by Counselor Dwight. Spent rules. Is there any discussion suspension rules? Roll call please.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Rules are suspended.
Move second reading, please.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Jarrett and second reading. Any discussion on second reading? Roll call please.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Right.
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
And Counselor Foster?
Yes. Hey, that passes in second reading. Moving on to 20.087, in order to approve spending to complete the Northview subdivision. First reading, but also two readings have been requested. Was there a motion?
I said it.
Okay, Counselor LaBarge, who seconded it?
I seconded.
Counselor Maori seconded it. Okay, any discussion on first reading? Counselor Dwight?
So in, I have, I have to express that I have an interest in, as an abutter to this property. I am on the board of the Conway School of Design and they're tenet that's in the butter. I have no financial interest and I don't think there's a conflict, but just in case, I'm going to state for, for the purpose of full disclosure of my interest there, I will still, I will, I retain my right to vote on this.
Thank you for that disclosure. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Move to suspend rules, please.
Motion's been made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor LaBarge. Suspend rules. Any discussion suspension of rules? Roll call on suspension of rules, please.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
And Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Move to approve second reading?
Rules are suspended. Counselor LaBarge has made the motion. Counselor Dwight has seconded it for second reading. Any discussion on second reading? Roll call please on second reading.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
And Counselor Maori?
Yes. Okay, that passes in two readings. We're up to 20.088, in order to authorize payment of prior year bills. First reading, but two readings are requested. Is there a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Counselor Dwight made the motion. Counselor Quinlan seconded it, I think. Um, discussion?
This was a toss-up between Thorpe and Quinlan.
All right, Thorpe's going to get the next one, I can feel it. Um, any discussion on first reading? Okay, seeing none, roll call please.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
And Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Suspend the rule.
Motion's been made to suspend rules by Counselor LaBarge, seconded by Counselor Dwight. Any discussion suspension rules? Roll call please on suspension.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
And Counselor Quinlan?
Move to approve second reading?
Motion's been made?
Second.
And seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Um, any discussion on second reading? Okay, roll call please on second reading.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
And Counselor Shara?
Yes. That passes in two readings. Next is 20.089, in order to authorize FY 2021 intermunicipal agreements. First reading, two readings requested. Motion's been made by Counselor Dwight?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Thorpe.
Do you want to read it again? I thought, I really enjoyed that.
I'm very thankful, I guess I only have to do this once a year.
If you, if you want to pass it up, go ahead, be my guest.
All right, thanks for waiving that reading. Any discussion on this first reading? Okay, roll call please.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan? Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
I mean, suspend the rule.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Dwight. To suspend rules, any discussions suspension of rules? Roll call please.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Okay, rules are suspended.
Move for a second reading please.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor Labarge, on second reading, any discussion? Roll call please on second reading.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe. Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in two readings, next is twenty point zero nine one, in order to accept gift of labor materials to repair grave of George Hudestia.
Counselor President, I would actually, may I ask that we consider items twenty, twenty point zero nine one, nine two, nine three, and nine four as a group?
The motion's been made to take them as a group, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second, seconded by Counselor Jarrett, any discussion taking them as a group? Roll call on taking them as a group?
Counselor Labarge to.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Point of information.
Yeah.
Are we, are we voting to take them as a group, or are we voting them?
I thought we needed, I thought we needed a motion to take them as a group, no?
No, I mean, unless there's an objection and people want to sample them out, but essentially it's, it's by mutual consent, so I don't think. But we'll complete the vote anyway, so I say yes.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure I knew what I was voting on, so.
Doing it this way, we will have cut in half the number of votes that we had to take.
Sure enough.
Counselor Dwight, what was it, about two weeks ago, where we took something by a group and you did a roll call vote on?
Right, well, we're, we're in the middle of it.
There we go.
Counselor.
God, I'll continue. Okay, Counselor Dwight, and then Counselor Foster.
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
They are grouped.
I, please approve them as a group now. That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Counselor Dwight, and Counselor Nash, are you waving?
Yes. I have one more thank, thank you.
Wait, hold on, hold on, is there a second on this?
There was, Counselor Quinlan.
Okay, please, another thank you.
I forgot to mention Director LaScalia, who kept this project at the top of, you know, even though the funding dropped out because of the capital improvements program and. Being, you know, kind of hit very hard this year, she kept it at the top of her agenda and it's moving forward. So, thank you to Donna.
Huge thanks to Director LaScalia, I'm gonna tell you, she was on this call.
I know, and she, now she's gone.
That's right, so you are gonna have to get on the horn tomorrow and thank her yourself.
All right.
Great thanks to Director LaScalia. Um, any other discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Okay, those pass in first reading, which brings us to twenty point zero nine five. In order for FY twenty twenty budget transfers, two readings are requested.
Move approval please.
Motion made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge, any discussion on first reading? Roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Move to suspend rules for a second reading.
Motion made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Thorpe, to suspend rules, session, roll call please.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
And Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Move second reading please.
Motion's been made. Seconded by Counselor Maori, made by Counselor Dwight, on second reading, any discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe. Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori. Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in two readings. Moving on to financial orders that are on their second reading, twenty point zero six eight, in order to appropriate balance of bond premium for replacement doors. For Smith Folk Agricultural High School buildings, building A.
Move second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Dwight.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Thorpe, any discussion on second reading? Roll call please.
Okay, Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge. Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
And Counselor Shara.
Yes. That passes in second reading, next is twenty point zero six nine, in order to authorize borrowing for six hundred and forty thousand dollars for new fire truck.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Labarge and seconded by Counselor Dwight. Yep, um, discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading, next is twenty point zero seven zero, in order to appropriate one point two two million from capital stabilization for various capital projects.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Thorpe, discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading, next is twenty point zero seven one, in order to appropriate twenty five thousand dollars from cemetery trust and income for cemetery restorative work.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Dwight, any discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading, next is twenty point zero seven two, in order to appropriate forty six thousand dollars from PEG access and cable related funds to IT for various projects.
Move approval please.
Motion made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge, any discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe. Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading, twenty point zero seven three, in order to reprogram seventy five thousand nine hundred and eight dollars from MSBA school projects to SVAH, SVAHS gym lockers.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Thorpe, discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading, next is twenty point zero seven four, in order to reprogram Ryan Road School Cafeteria Funds to NPS Projects.
Move approval please.
Seconded.
Motion's been made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Thorpe, discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
And Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading, twenty point zero seven five, in order to purchase land on Boggy Meadow Road to add to the Broadbrook Fitzgerald Lake Greenway.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Quinlan, discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
And Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading, twenty point zero seven eight, in order to authorize King Street Corridor improvements right-of-way acquisition.
Move approval please.
Second.
Motion's made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Quinlan, discussion? Oh, wait, hold up.
Um, thank you, Counselor, I was trying to get your attention, thank you. I actually need to request an amendment to this order on second reading. Sort of a late-breaking change we need to make. So I mentioned at the last meeting that the right-of-way easements were a combination of, in some cases, we were purchasing, and then in other cases, we had some donations. Certain property owners had donated their easements. purchasing, and then in other cases, we had some donations. Um, certain property owners had donated their easements. We have one of these easements that we have, but we have not been able to finalize and verify the donation for. And so, because of the required paperwork for mast DOT and out of an abundance of caution, um, I want to actually amend the order, um, as well as amend the order of taking to put in, to basically revert it back to, not to a donation, but to an actual purchase of the easement. Because we don't want to delay the project, which is scheduled to go out for advertising. We're going to try to work through that issue. It's, it's actually Cumberland Farms and, um, and it had to go through their whole sort of corporate chain and legal chain for approval, and there was some miscommunication there, so um, I was on the phone as late as 3:30 today, speaking with their, um, real estate division, but we were not able to get that finalized. So, I want to ask basically to revert it back to as if we were purchasing it, um, and then we're going to work with them over the next days to hopefully get that corrected, but we want the order to pass to represent what the, what the case is right now. So, on the order before you, the order authorizing acquisition of property interest, um, the amendment I would ask for would be the, the total sum that's listed at the bottom, um, which is coming from Chapter 90 monies, currently reads 215,500. Um, and I would ask that that be changed to 229,700 dollars.